Yes, everything else is correct from what you're getting.
Yes.
Yes.
It was the question five was.
Five.
That's it.
It is in the Florida tax march, how many counties prepare?
Probably same.
It's not just sharing, it's safety in general. Inclusing to keep our attention, to fight the attacks.
Yeah.
But it isn't that how counties should pay.
Yeah.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
No problem at all.
And again, although.
Good afternoon, everyone. Like to call this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order. Today is June 11th, 2024. It is one o'clock. If everyone would please silence their devices, we'd very much appreciate it. We're going to start off with invocation and the pledge, both led by Go Navy. Eric Lenthicam, he served for four years in the U.S. Navy onboard the USS South Carolina. During the Iranian hostage crisis, he spent most of the 1980 in the Indian Ocean guarding the Gulf of Amman. Following his service in the Navy, he became a full-time firefighter, EMT, in Haynesville, Ohio. After a back injury, he ended that career, went back to college, and on to seminary. I believe you're living a life of service, sir. Thank you. Reverend Lenthicam has served congregations in Ohio and Maryland until retiring from full-time ministry in November of 2020. He is now serving here in Inverness as the pastor of Tree of Life Lutheran Church. Thank you. If you are ready, willing, and able to stand, we would love it if you would join us.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Almighty God, we ask your presence, and we ask you to bless this session of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. Give the members of the board wisdom, discretion, and guidance as they conduct the business of Citrus County today. Where there may be disagreement, let it be done without disrespect. May all conversation that takes place here today be constructive and with the best interest of the residents of Citrus County in mind. We put this meeting, this board, all elected officials, and the residents of Citrus County into your care in the name of your Son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
With our nation's colors in place, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Reverend. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners.
Oh, we have the clerk.
It's 11th day of June 2024. In attendance, Chair Holly Davis, First Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Second Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Ruthie Schlebaugh, County Administrator Steve Howard, and I want to see County Attorney Denise Lynn, but I don't see her over there, so.
Has she been spotted?
I've not seen her, but she, I know she's here today.
Pending.
Pending.
She's here. County Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's always lovely to have you in chambers with us. Okay, Board, or actually, Mr. Howard?
Yes, just a few additional information. E5, the Safe Haven Baby Box Lease and Service Agreement, Exhibit B, Safe Haven Baby Boxes Inc., services, fees, and expenses schedule has been updated. Additional information, E14, Constitutional Officer Budget Guidance, updated budget from the Clerk's office. Additional information, H1, the 1:30 PM presentation added from the Florida Blue Health Insurance Plan. And we also received additional information, U1, the 5:01 PM revised manatee element. There was input received from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and that's all, please.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. In addition, Board, I would like to pull E15, which is the LED billboards. I'm not saying I won't be in favor of it in the future, but I have checked with staff. It is not time-sensitive, and it was a very reasonable worry from a citizen based on the strategic plan that maybe LED billboards are not nature.
I think it's E1, E1, E1F.
They have a problem with delaying that? I'm sorry.
E1F.
I'm sorry, I said E15 because that's what I wrote down, and it was E1F. It's, yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I would also, at the Board's pleasure, pull E1I. I would recommend that we rebid this because it only had, we only had one response out of four, and it came in very high.
Mr. Howard, do you have any issue with that?
No.
Madam Chair, point of order, I don't, I would think that we would address the E1 items once we get there. If we want to pull that separately and table it, or have a more lengthy discussion, but I don't know that it's appropriate to handle during acceptance of the agenda.
Yeah, I could have gone either way, and I talked to staff and said I would just pull it, so that's fine. We can table it, we can get there if you would prefer that. We're missing our attorney right now, so.
Okay.
I did check on it because that was my question, too, as to which way to go.
I just, all right, I mean, I'll go along with, with it. I'm just, just not sure it's appropriate order.
Okay. If nothing else, I wanted to at least give you all a heads up that when we come to that, I'm going to come to a screeching halt and want to table it.
All right.
So it's always nice to have a little heads up from your colleagues, yes?
You got it.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
The same for E1I, if you want to discuss it, but I did look at protocol, and it, you know, said I could pull it, but I can just take that back, and we can talk about it when we get to that section.
Okay.
Whatever, at the Board's pleasure.
Commissioner Bays, Commissioner Finnegan, we're getting stuck in the weeds, but do you have any opinion either, either way?
I agree with my colleague at the end.
Okay.
There we go.
All righty. Then it will, Madam Clerk, the only changes are the ones that Steve Howard put forward, okay? All right, looking for a motion for approval of agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, would you like to take the consent in its entirety?
Motion to approve consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, C. Looks like we just have C1.
Motion approved, C1.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, join me downstairs.
Those representing Keep Citrus County Beautiful, if you could please come forward. Whereas Keep Citrus County Beautiful is an affiliate of Keep America Beautiful and Keep Florida Beautiful, it was incorporated in 2001 as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization to encourage personal responsibility for reducing litter, promoting recycling, and beautifying our community through education, activities, and recognition. And whereas to recognize those individuals and organizations that have volunteered their time and effort to preserve our county's natural beauty, Keep Citrus County Beautiful created the Pride Award to recognize their contributions to reducing litter, promoting recycling, and beautifying our community. And whereas it is with great appreciation that the Keep Citrus County Beautiful Pride Award is presented to the Ozello Civic Association, Keep Ozello Beautiful, for its diligent and dedicated participation in the Citrus County, Florida Adopt a Road program. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County recognizes with great appreciation the Keep Citrus County Beautiful Pride Award presented to the Ozello Civic Association, Keep Ozello Beautiful, for its diligent and dedicated participation in the Citrus County, Florida Adopt a Road program, executed this 11th day of June 2024.
Two seconds. So on behalf of Keep Citrus County Beautiful, we once again just be, express our gratitude for the continued partnership that we have with the county on the various levels that we do, and thank you for providing us with this platform to be able to recognize the various organizations and individuals that are in our community that help keep it beautiful. Thank you.
Okay, we have a several time certants starting at 1:30, so we're going to do open to the public until 1:30 or open to the public is finished, whichever comes first. If anyone would like to address the Board, please fill out a green card and hand to the clerk. You will have three minutes to speak. If you're registered as a group, you, with us, you will have five minutes to speak, but please do let the timer know. All comments are directed to the chairman. And when, when you start off, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Carleen Semper, Inverness Village Four. The, there's a small handful of residents within Inverness Village Four that have been working on getting quotes for maintenance, certain things that we could do to help prevent with erosion of the roads and such. But we would like to request a workshop with the county, since the county does own the right-of-way in there. We can't just go ahead and proceed with doing the things that we've come up with. But we've actually been working with outside contractors and engineers that have been coming up with really great plans in there. So if we could request a workshop, we would highly appreciate it because we do need the county's permission to do anything in the right-of-way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Anita Olbeck Tooker from South Glen Meadow Loop in La Canto, Florida. I would just like to address the commission regarding the Safe Haven Baby Boxes. During one meeting, Ms. Finnegan indicates that she thought, quote, "dropping off a baby in a box was like dropping off a urine sample." Gross, unquote. I would say comparing a human to a urine sample is gross. She also indicated that the first time someone threw a baby in a dumpster, many people started throwing babies in dumpsters. Imagine if one person used a Safe Haven baby box, then many others might do the same. That would save so many lives. On July 1st, 2024, the Safe Haven SB 790 and HB 775 will offer more options for surrender of infants, such as 30 days instead of seven. Surrender can take place at a hospital, fire station, EMS station, or 911 can be called, quote, "to pick up an infant." This is neither cost-effective or anonymous. I have been in our end for over 50 years. I've worked at Citrus Memorial for 46. I have taken care of your families. I recently spoke to a director of women's center whose expertise indicates these boxes are vital for best outcomes. We have a growing community, and due to health care cuts, many are not getting the care that they or their infant need. There are, if there is an abuser, the infant would have a much better outcome from a baby box. In addition, the mothers receive information and resources from the baby box for their own care and needs. They are also reluctant to be seen or admit that they cannot care for the child, fear of prosecution, exploitation, or being talked out of the surrender. Under these circumstances, the parent is not likely to be able to give any medical information about themselves or the infant. If you're going to surrender a child in a hospital, where would you go? Do you go in the front door, to the ER? To whom do you surrender the baby? The same question at fire stations and EMS stations. Since 2,443 newborns have been abandoned or surrendered in Florida, that we know of, 64 in unsafe places. In March of '24, a newborn found dead in a dumpster in Hollywood, Florida. In April of '24, a newborn was found in the trash in Tampa. How do you place a dollar value on these lives when there is an obvious solution? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice job watching the clock. No applause, thank you. I appreciate the sentiment, but do watch the clock as the last speaker did. That was great. That way, I don't have to stop you in mid-sentence. It'll go yellow when you have 60 seconds.
Gotcha. Commissioner Schleba, I find it disgusting that someone would say...
Point of order, please try to keep it clean.
This is.
Okay.
Now, can I start my clock over?
Commissioner Kennard.
Yes. First of all, we need a name and where she lives, and all comments should be addressed to the chair.
And no personal attacks, thank you.
No, actually, it's not. Terry Weber-Nellis, Inverness Villages 4. Commissioner Schleba, I find it disgusting that someone would say to you that you deserve the help that all your fighting. You have an expression that makes me giggle, and I'm paraphrasing. You say you're one tough Irish woman. Me, too. That's why I keep showing up for IV-4 and speaking up for IV-4.
My apologies, by the way. Keep going.
Nothing ruffles my feathers more than people making comments that just aren't true or are inaccurate, and that does nothing but add salt to the wound. From the very beginning, we were told we bought on sugar sand. That's not an accurate statement at all. The county finally acknowledges that you own the roads, and they were constructed illegally. If the homeowners were to maintain the road themselves in the original state, all we would need would be a lawnmower. If anything screams workshop, it's IV-4. It's unfortunate that it's gotten to this point, but it has. We don't know what we're allowed to do, what we're not allowed to do. We don't know the status of the letter from the AG. They won't speak to us. They will only speak with Commissioner Davis. We don't know what the status is of the conversations between Mr. Howard and the City of Inverness. We haven't heard any conversation on grant money. I still feel a solution is doable and affordable. And as the other resident said, me personally, long before your letter to the AG, I reached out to the AG, the DEP, SWIFTMUD, FDOT, Department of Business and Professional Regulations, FWC, City of Inverness, Ralph Manzullo's office, and the list goes on. We have done our homework. We don't just sit and talk amongst ourselves. Thanks for your time. And again, I'm sorry you listened to that.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dr. Carmen Kubitschek, Inverness Village 4, 4512 East Maryland Street. I'm here again to implore, just like the previous residents have, to do a workshop. I think we need transparency. We need everything kind of broken down for us. The assessment that was quoted, $109,000, it's ludicrous. I think we have a better solution and maybe one that's more affordable. Commissioner Davis, in your last remark previous to the last meeting, you said that you have no further tools in your toolbox. Well, as a constituent of District 5, I voted you in. And so the job of everyone here is to find a solution. If you don't have a solution, then I think we need to maybe pass the baton to someone else who has a solution for us or at least can give us some answers. I understand the sunshine law. I know that you all can't talk amongst you. But I do encourage every single commissioner up there to get familiar with everyone else's district and the concerns that their constituent has. So when we have meetings like this, everyone can understand what the problem is because it's very painful for some of us to sit in the audience and hear over and over, "Oh, I didn't get that." "Well, the staff was supposed to give it to you." "Well, I didn't get it." I mean, you know, this is a board meeting. Everyone needs to be informed and educated on what the concerns of the constituents are. I will continue to come to this meeting until we find a solution. I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Neil Silverman. I live in Terra Wood, HOA. That's in Floral City. And my purpose today is to make our community's letter of support available to the county commissioners, Mr. Howard, the county administrator, and Ken Cheek, the county water resource director. Our residents want to convey to you as the commissioners and department heads our need and support for your consideration of accepting the Terra Wood HOA water and sewage to the county's Water Resources Department. There's five copies for commissioners and a copy for Mr. Howard and Mr. Cheek. And I handed those letters over this morning to Elaine, and we'd appreciate your, you know, making note of that as well. And thanks for your attention this afternoon.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Betty Honkenen, and I've lived in Citrus County for over 25 years. I'm here in support of Commissioner Schleba's proposal for baby boxes in Citrus County. I spent over 10 years working at a hospital in Miami, where I was born. They say no one's born in Miami, but that's not true, where baby boxes were commonplace, both at hospitals around the area and fire stations in Dade County. These boxes are equipped with an alarm system which alerts personnel that something has been placed in the box, prompting them to check the box in a timely manner. In the current atmosphere of various states attempting to eliminate a woman's rights over her own body, up to and including restricting various forms of birth control that they deem abortion-causing, you can be sure there will be more young people, young women having babies. They're ill-equipped to care for. If you are pro-life, as some love to profess, then baby boxes, in my opinion, are a way to save the lives of unwanted infants in Citrus County. I can promise you, babies will surely be placed into dumpsters otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
John Drum, Inverness Village 4. I, too, would like you to have a workshop on the area that is really affected by the flooding and road damage, which is south of East Bennett Street. The area north of East Bennett, the only issue there is the condition of Cunningham. And quite frankly, living down that end, I don't care if you paved that or not. But I do feel that a workshop is really needed to look at the area better and all the commissioners maybe do a site visit. I think that, I mean, that way you get the full picture of what's really going on down there. I know Commissioner Davis has been down there probably a number of times. I don't know about the rest of you. But that's my opinion, and I do support the other IV-4 homeowners down there. There's a list of streets.
Next speaker, sorry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Linda Varanich. I live in Hernando. Been a resident here for six years, speaking in favor of supplying the baby boxes as had been proposed by Ms. Schlabach. In the face of unwanted pregnancy, when contraception options have been voted down by the United States Senate just this past week and the dearth of male responsibility when it comes to pregnancies, where the burden is always on the woman or girl who has conceived, I don't think an option of castration and turning men into eunuchs would work, but for having no exception to carry a rapist's impregnation to term, let alone incest, and the shame. These girls, these women, if they knew to go to a fire station, they probably would. They don't have the wherewithal, and I don't mean to do a broad brush, but if they knew to do it to a fire station, why would this need for a baby box come into play? And as ridiculous as, I'm sorry, I'm addressing it to you, but part of the argument that was in the editorial of the paper had to do with the fact it's not a medical device. Well, neither is the bed sheet on my, you know, keeps dust mites down, but that's called a medical device, too. So I mean, you can't just stretch a definition to cover the ground when it isn't intended to be there. What is unsafe about it? I don't see. The fact it's alarmed is just one more option when our options as reproductive women and girls are so limited. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Gil Phalen from La Canto. You know, I know you guys are very good at financial things and planning. That's really not my interest. I'm tired of watching this world swirl down the toilet, okay? And it's the woke-ism and the DEI and all the stuff that's purported on this board that's helping it go down the tubes, okay? Who would have imagined we're talking about babies in boxes? Huh? That's the whole thing with the woke-ism. Woke-ism's creating a nationwide mental asylum. And if you can't see it, and I heard it last night at the meeting. You know, one of the commissioners said, "Well, I didn't vote for no queer books because I was afraid they'd remove the Bible from the library." And, oh, I didn't say, and this is right to our faces. Oh, I didn't say I liked that T-shirt with Ruth Skindberg. I pointed out because I like the name Ruth. No, I watched the video, and it was said, "I can't say enough good things about her." Wasn't anything, we're talked to like we're people with IQs of 50, okay? Gaslighting, lying, it's all wrapped up in this BS that we have to put up with. The Republican Committee, who supports you guys, you know, they ask, "Hey, can we get some support on stopping this lawfare that's helping destroy our country?" No response, it's not important. You know, I'd rather have a good society than good roads. So all this talk, it's always about the base gallops or the roads. I really don't care. I'd rather live on a dirt road and know that my neighbors, my old neighbors, are taken care of and that our children are actually taken care of. Have you guys seen those wonderful Frankenstein operations that you support with your DEI and the wokeness, you know, where they're taking 11-year-olds and giving them new vaginas and penises?
No.
Stop it, no. I'm allowed, this is called free speech, okay? This is the truth. I know people don't like to hear the truth, but look up at Boston General Hospital. Look through their notes, okay? Look at the stuff that they're doing to children. This is what's happening with this craziness that's here. So I just pray that the woke Rhinos go on to whatever jobs they have, and we get some real, true, conservative Christians in here. Thank you.
You do not represent Christ. I trust me on this.
I'm not talking to you.
Keep it down. Next speaker, please. Next speaker.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Bill Dolly, Citrus Springs. Good afternoon. I'm here to talk about the sheriff. You know, the sheriff in this county has a lot of power, as we know. And if they don't have transparency, he or she, as the sheriff, you know, the question is, what is going on? Where is that money going? How is it spent? And...
I'm sorry. Can we get a deputy in here, please? I know, but I'm not going to go to the top. Colonel Farrar. Commissioner Schleba, what was the issue?
I'm just talking. It's exactly what I mean. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
You can't touch other people in the audience.
Obviously, restart the... No. I love Tuesdays. Would you like to start again?
Of course.
You get a new sheet of paper, a whole new clock.
I don't know what to do with all this time. That went well, didn't it? Oh, my God. But anyways, I'm here to speak up. As we all know, you know, a lot of people still demand that Deputy Sheriff LeHera, he should be taken care of. And I know I'm picking a scab on that one again, but there is a lot of talk out there. A lot of people are still concerned. And I know I'm picking a scab on that one again, but there is a lot of talk out there. A lot of people are still concerned. And here's the point with that. The sheriff's got a lot of discretion to spend the money any way he wants. He can buy anything, right? He can have no deputies. He can do whatever he wants, right? And a lot of people are going, "Why can't he just medically retire Deputy LeHera?" So, that's out there and that's getting more and more traction. And just so you know, it's an issue. The second thing is the budget, the sheriff's budget. And I know you've all gone round and round with the sheriff's budget and it's a mess. There's no transparencies, we know. And, you know, I don't understand where all the money's going. You know, even if he does get a grant and you match it, say it's a three-year, five-year federal grant. So, when that money runs out, what are you gonna do with 45 deputy sheriffs? You're gonna let them all go? It doesn't even make sense, as we know, right? The other issue is Dennis Himmel. You know, we saw the photo in the paper, you know, the sheriff's got SWAT gear on. My question is, is he qualified to be SWAT, right? Is he qualified the way the gear? And really, the gear is not even worn correctly by the sheriff. It's really, you know, what is going on, right? So, clearly, that's abuse of power, right? And the budget is really fraud because he's not telling us what he's doing with the money. That's another issue. And it comes down to, I got two bottom-line points to bring up. One is the MSTU. I think we need to have that for the CCSO. And along with that, you need to put in something like a, you know, a good faith incentive hold, like 10% of the budget, and he gets it last quarter. So, how do you control and how do you control metrics and good behavior in the sheriff's department? So, that's the question I have. And the last thing is, you know, I agree with Michelle LeHera that, you know, she goes, "The sheriff is corrupted." You know, I think she said this. You know, she thinks it's waste, fraud, and abuse, right? She thinks it's ethical boundary violations. She thinks the sheriff is corrupt. So, the truth is somewhere halfway in the middle, right? And we don't know. No one knows. So, you know, a lot of people have come to me asking me to speak up, to come to the board, and see if you guys can write a letter to the Inspector General of the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. At least we have an investigation, right? We got an election coming up. You know, is the sheriff corrupt or not? That's the question. And how can we have a fair election if we don't know if we can answer that question or not? So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna pause open to the public and go on to our 1:30 time certain. We will reopen open to the public and then all of us will respond as we see fit to the various concerns and questions. So, Florida Blue Health Insurance Plan. I don't think your mic is on, is it? There you go. Now it is.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, June Randall, Human Resources Director. I'd like to introduce Sean Fleming from the Garing Group, which is the insurance broker for the county.
Thank you, June. Good afternoon, everybody. Sean Fleming, Senior Benefits Consultant with the Garing Group. So, this afternoon, I'm gonna try and not put anyone asleep, but give you a very quick overview of everybody's favorite topic, which is health insurance. Talk about where we're at, just give you a little insight into the status of the market, and then talk about our recommendations for the upcoming year. So, is that, am I good to just, perfect. Okay, I can't. Didn't know if you guys could see it. So, real quick, we're just gonna talk a little bit about claims experience today, the renewal projection, and then our recommendations going forward. So, some background on this slide. I'm just gonna hit on a couple of quick points. The county's been self-insured since 2008. So, prior to that, the county was under a fully insured arrangement, which essentially meant that you paid a flat fee to the insurance company, Florida Blue at the time. And if you spent half of that in claims, they kept that all as profit. On the flip side of that, if you paid more, they took a loss, but of course, they'd hit you with a big renewal in the next year. So, that was switched in 2008. Just for everybody's knowledge, there's three constitutionals on top of the VCC employees that are on the plan. That's the clerk, the property appraiser, and the supervisor of elections. So, periodically, we go out to RFP. The last RFP was done in 2021 for the '22 plan year. And the county ultimately elected to remain with Florida Blue. That was really the strength of the network of providers in the area, as well as the discounts that Florida Blue negotiates with those hospitals and doctors. And a couple of years ago, we went from two plans to one. That was in 2022. The county pays 100% of the employee cost. And up until last year, employees paid the difference if they covered dependents under family coverage. Last year, the county began providing a subsidy towards that dependent coverage. This is just if we need to reference back to it, but this is our schedule of benefits. So, the employees have a $1,500 deductible. They have co-pays if they go to the doctor. And then if they are in, either inpatient or outpatient hospital, they'll have that deductible on coinsurance. I know that I'm going fast because I wanna get through to the good parts, but y'all, please stop me if you have any questions. So, when we talk about claims experience, what we're really talking about is costs that are coming to the plan. So, a very small portion of the plan costs actually go to Florida Blue to administer the program. The bulk of the costs that come through are what we spend, you know, after an employee pays their co-pay, as an example. The rest of the cost of that office visit is picked up by the plan, which is ultimately the county. So, overall, in the last 12 months, we've seen our claims costs increase by about 13.1%. A little bit of that is we have a 2.7% increase in number of members, so more people have elected the plan. The next two, though, really the heart of that, are good news, is our cost for medical care has actually only gone up 1.3%, so well below inflation, well below medical inflation. So, we have a good positive there. Pharmacy, on the other hand, is up about 12.6%. That is pretty in line with what we're seeing with most of our groups. And in a couple of slides, I'm gonna just touch a little bit more on what's driving that. So, every year, we go through a process where we look at projecting costs for the upcoming year. And we also look at different options to mitigate that cost. And we weigh really the benefit or, you know, takeaway to the employees and to the county as a part of that process. So, something that we looked at this year, we did look at high deductible plans with health savings accounts. Overall, the savings for doing that really didn't provide tremendous value either to the employees or the county. We looked at making tweaks to the schedule of benefits, but really, when you look at what's driving our costs, are higher cost expenses, things like cancer treatments and some of those. So, putting another $250 or $500 on the employee really doesn't move the needle at all for the overall plan, but obviously burdened your employees in a time of high inflation and everything else that's going on. But the last bullet there is something that we've spent a lot of time on the last couple of years. And that was looking at changing the plan tiers and moving the cost share around a little bit. So, without making everything too complex, right now, there's two tiers of coverage on the plan. I'm either a single employee or I have family coverage. And family coverage could be just my spouse. It could be my one child. It could be my four children without my spouse, or it could be all of us together on the plan. And the county's been under that structure for a while, but a lot of entities have moved off of that structure to a four-tier structure. So, that breaks out where if I'm just covering my spouse, I don't pay as much as covering my full family. And if I'm just covering my children without my spouse, you know, kids typically don't have a lot of expenses. So, that would realign some of those costs more align, especially to benefit employees that are only covering kids. And that's probably the biggest feedback that we hear. So, I'll talk about the increase real quick and then we'll look at the options. So, overall, the plan calls for a 9% increase. When we look at the way the plan is running, that is really to account for medical inflation. So, those higher pharmaceutical costs, two areas that are really driving that right now. It's cancer and it's diabetes. So, cancer, we have a lot of new treatments. They're very effective. They're having great results, but they come with a much larger price tag. And then the diabetes space, we have a little bit of good and bad right now. Everybody's probably seen a commercial for or heard about Ozempic, Manjaro, Wegovy, one of those. Those are diabetes drugs that are having tremendous impact for people with diabetes. But we have this little bit of a downside in that they also lead to weight loss. So, there's a lot of people trying to get them maybe when they don't have diabetes and that. They're about $1,100 to $1,200 a month, those medications. So, we're seeing higher costs from that. We've had a couple of catastrophic claims, and then the system overall is still catching up from a lot of things that were put off during COVID. You know, people didn't get tests. They didn't get mammograms or colonoscopies, so we're finding things later. So, ultimately, in discussion with staff, we actually met with an insurance committee, which is made up of a group of employees. We presented both the two-tier and the four-tier option. And there was really unanimous support from both that committee and from all of us in our discussions to look at moving to that four-tier subsidy. So, I'll go back to this slide if I need to. But if we go to the four-tier, there's an increase of about $745,000 to the county if everybody stays based on who they're covering on the plan currently. And what I mean by that is, right now, if I'm covering my kids, there's no added cost to add my spouse on. So, what we actually think is gonna happen is with making this tier, there'll actually be some people that will drop and move around from the family coverage that they're in now to one of those lower tiers. So, we actually think that the overall increase will end up being lower than that. So, just so you know who that affects, 721 employees right now are on single coverage. So, we don't think that there'll be a lot of movement in that area. There could be some people now that maybe will cover only kids. So, we're talking about 165 families that will potentially see a little bit of an increased cost. So, what we have here is kind of a look, if you stayed with the two-tier, what that monthly cost would be versus if you go to the four-tier. So, what I'd like to point out on the right is the employee plus spouse. So, if you're covering a spouse now with that full family coverage, you're actually not gonna see any increase. I think it's 52 cents a pay, so let me not be on record as any increase, but it's less than a dollar a pay. If you have child coverage, instead of paying $629 a month for your coverage, you know, split up over your pays, that's actually gonna go down to $447. And then individuals that choose to continue to cover the full family, they would end up paying $704 versus $629 on the two-tier structure.
I just wanna clarify, when I was looking at this earlier too. So, you have up there, the two-tier on the box is actually our current fiscal year prices. The four-tier would be next or a renewal, correct? Because I have on mine, it says current, 2020, 2023, 2024 for current, and then option two, four-tier, 2425. But it doesn't give if you keep two-tier, 2425. So, if we were just two-tier, would the individual monthly still be $737.65?
No, if you were two-tier, the... Hold on one second and I will get that for you. I don't know. I don't think there's a way that I can put that on.
We're not comparing apples to apples. We're comparing, we were looking at something, what we're doing right now to something that we want to do, which four-tier seems to make sense, but I'm not giving the 2425 numbers on the other way, on the other direction.
Understood. Let me see if I can pull that up. I don't know if there's a way to put that up. Give me one second.
I guess my point being, we certainly, four-tier sounds like a good idea, but if it's more expensive all the way around, you know, if we kept two-tier and the spouse, like right now, just employee plus spouse is more than you have for employee plus family, but we're looking at last year's numbers.
So, currently, right now, so it's $629, like we said, for that. If we go to the two-tier, let me just get you that number.
I don't see $629 anywhere. Oh, I'm looking at total monthly, the 710 employee only. Employee only, this year's 710.
Madam Chairman, it's $629 is on this. Is it the same on yours?
Yes.
I see that, but I'm looking at employee only.
So, employee only, which one are you looking at? Employee only will stay zero.
Well, obviously, but it's not zero to the county.
Understood, yes. And that is the... Correct. So, 710 is the...
That's what we're currently paying. It says 2324, but you're quoting us on 2425, so would it be the same?
No, it's a, no, ma'am, it's a 9% increase, and I just need to get the right spreadsheet up. I do not have the current spreadsheet. Commissioner, do you have the one you just showed?
Are you asking what a 9% increase is? It's $774.45. It's 9% plus 710.50.
So, it is more expensive.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. I have it here. It's, this is page 1640 of your...
Backup material?
Yep. Sorry, page 1640.
I'm on 1640, yes.
Okay. So, what you will see, and let me explain, this is probably why it looks confusing now that I know which spreadsheet you were looking at. So, you will see the, so the... Okay, actually, I'm sorry, 1639. I apologize.
1639.
Yes, ma'am.
Page or number or dollar?
Page 1639. I'm sorry.
We're online, so it's show that.
Which is still the 2023 compared to 2024, 25.
Correct. So, on the left is current, and on the right, you'll see that it says option one, two-tier, but you see four tiers of coverage. If you look at that, and this is probably the confusion, you will see that the rates for the three tiers, so we had to build the spreadsheets either two or four. So, you'll see that the rates for the last three tiers are all exactly the same. So, that would be if you kept the current two-tier, it would be 774.44 for single and 1548 for anybody with the dependent tiers.
Perfect.
Does that make sense? I'm sorry.
It absolutely does. Thank you.
I didn't know what sheet you were looking at. I was trying to jump around with mine, so I apologize for probably making it more confusing.
Perfect. Thank you.
But the, so the rates are going up no matter what, year over year, which would make sense. I guess the point being is that because we just don't know what the delta is. Is it 9% whether we go with two or four?
Yes, ma'am. It's 9% ultimately either way. So, like on page 1639, even though you see four tiers on the right, which I know it makes it a little confusing, those rates are the same. So, if you stayed exactly the way you are now, single employees would have no increase and employees with any level of dependent coverage would go up $28.32 per pay. So, that is per se your as-is scenario.
They're going from $629 to $685 monthly?
If we kept the same.
Yeah.
We could change and they would save a lot of money on the four-tier.
Yes, so, so exactly. So, then on page 1640, if you kinda wanna compare that per-pay column change...
Got it.
That's where those numbers I referenced, you know, 52 cents if I'm only gonna cover my spouse. So, basically, I'm paying the same amount I pay now. I get a $90.75 reduction if I'm covering just children, because kids generate a lot less cost. And I'll pay $37.43 of pay more as a family. So, you know, in my head, everybody thinks about things differently. But, you know, if you look at what's the adverse impact from an employee point of view, it's $37.43 versus $28.32. That delta is kind of the downside if somebody's covering their full family. But again, maybe they don't need to cover their full family. They're just doing it right now because they do.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry for making it more confusing.
Commissioner Schlebal?
So, insurance, ugh, ugh. The four-tier is, for us, I assume, to be more competitive, to give more options to our employees and to try to save money where we can because it's all going up?
Yeah.
Is that the gist of this little package?
That's the gist, and I would say a couple of things. The competitive point, what you see, here's, I think, a problem that the county has. If somebody looks at three competitors around and they all have four tiers, and we've heard this in our insurance committee meetings, if somebody's... if somebody's just covering their kids, they can pay a lot less at a lot of other places. So, I think that really, you know, potentially plugs a hole from a recruiting and retention point of view to, to make the plan overall more competitive. And candidly, I don't, I never liked this word in insurance, but it makes it a little more fair for the employees to align the costs as to where the expenses come from. But ultimately, yes, the increase is essentially kind of the same either way. I think that was your other question, but yes.
Thank you. Anything else, let him continue, carry on.
So, that was actually, uh, that was actually the end, so.
Nicely done on the questions then. Okay, anything else? You're all good? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, you're welcome. So, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve H1 four-tier option, page 1640.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebo, second by Commissioner Finnegan. I'm sorry.
Clarification, is that one or two?
I said four-tier.
Four-tier, which doesn't... It doesn't say one or two, does it? Not on my script, but...
Sorry, the backup I was looking at, okay.
What does it say on the backup?
No, no.
It just says, authorize and approve the chairman to choose and vote on the insurance plan.
So, I move to approve H1 four-tier option, page, I don't know, 1640.
Okay, good. All right, is there any public comment on H1?
Janet Barick, Citrus Springs. As a citizen, I think the four-tier option is the best with the way the world is today, because you do have single employees. You also have a single mom with her kids. You also have a mom, a husband, and kids. So, the thing is, to allow for the employees to do and get what they particularly need is a wonderful thing that the county is doing, and I think this is a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on H1? Seeing none, any further board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Whoop, who said, who said yes?
That was me.
What did you say? Commissioner Baze? Okay, you go.
I know we look at this year over year, but part of the reason insurance premiums are so high is because everybody expects it to pay for the lowest common denominator. I mean, when you're looking at a, a well-care or your, your visit to your doctor, 30 bucks, I mean, that's not how insurance was designed. Insurance was designed to be a catastrophic policy. That's why our premiums are off the charts with homeowners, property insurance, car insurance, health insurance. And I guess what I'd really like to see going forward next year, let's look, let's, let's talk to our employees. What if they had a, an availability to them for an HSA, and you had a policy that had a higher deductible? Let's really dig in, let's really analyze it, because we're paying for a health clinic on top of it. I don't know, I don't know the metrics for this. And I think that we can probably do a better job. Part of it is training people, and part of it is understanding the full package and the dollars. I mean, we're so, the, you know, the train is on the tracks and we're going down, down the path, and, and I'm fine, but I, we've got 12 months from now to really do the deep dive, really look at this, really understand, and I know that we're self-insured to a certain point, and you have crap, catastrophic illnesses. But if you had an HSA, people can put money in it, they can contribute a certain dollar, leave it in there, they can afford to take the higher deductible, and understand what they're using and how they're using it. And I, I, I'm not completely sold on this idea, but I'm going to support it, but I would really like the deeper dive for next year.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comment? All those in, you're done? Everybody's done?
Good job.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H2.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You're going to have a public hearing?
Oh, sorry, I was thinking it was something else.
No, you're okay. At the conclusion of the public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance creating the law enforcement municipal service taxing unit for the entire unincorporated area of Citrus County, Florida, providing certain findings describing the boundaries of the law enforcement MSTU, authorizing the law enforcement MSTU to annually levy and, excuse me, levy ad valorem taxes to provide law enforcement services, facilities, and programs, authorizing a pledge of the law enforcement MSTU ad valorem tax revenues to the retirement of debt when approved by the electors of the law enforcement MSTU as provided by general law, authorizing issuance of debt upon referendum approval, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Excellent. Okay, so going to open it up to the public? Would anyone like to speak for or against this matter?
Bill Dolly, Citrus Springs, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I think this is a great idea. I've talked to a lot of people in the county, probably at least 100, you multiply that by 1,000. A lot of people want this, and I don't know if you can add a rider in with this, like a good faith clause for a set aside 10% of the budget for the sheriff's office, but I think that's a wise thing to do, because you've got to have some control over the sheriff's office. Right now, so what, who cares, right? They get everything, and every penny is discretionary dollars. I just don't get it. I've never seen that in my life, right? That one person has that power, right? No oversight, none. We have no idea what's going on, right? And no one up here should be defending the sheriff, or they should love the sheriff. Your job is to trust and verify and somehow drill down on the sheriff, right? They have a lot of power, he has a lot of power. And I think we need this. So, and a lot of people in the county believe we, we really need this, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter?
Amy Pen- Amy Penard-Hernando. I also agree. I think this was a great idea that was brought forth by one of the commissioners and being supported. Being very active on social media, there is a lot of negativity and a lot of questioning of what's going on in the sheriff's department. And having had a lot of dealings with them, it just raises more questions. So, I absolutely 100% agree that this needs to be done. There needs to be some more accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Janet Barick, Citrus Springs. Municipal Service Taxing Unit. I don't like that at all, and I don't like it because the only people that say how much that tax is going to be are the five people on a deus. The residents have no input in it, because it's a taxing, it might be for a taxing unit for so many people, but the residents really have no input whatsoever. You say it's transparency? I don't know what you're going to be transparent about, okay? You're saying that you're going to get to see the sheriff's budget a little bit more. You're not going to get to see anything different. You're going to see this is how much he needs, it's going to go into a taxing unit. You're going to figure out this is the number of people being taxed, so each person is going to be paying. Just like we didn't get to say how much we wanted for the stormwater taxing unit. And I think we're going to be talking about that one going up. So, the thing is, as a resident, we don't have any say. If you keep it where it's at, then the expenses have to be brought in line with keeping our millage down. God bless you.
Excuse me.
Okay, so when, when you start saying different sources of finding, different sources of revenue, it's a shell game. You're taking this, putting it over here, and then you're saying, well, the millage went down. Yeah, the millage went down, but you added that tax money back over on this side, God bless you.
I think I'm allergic to your comments.
That's okay. I have no problem with that. But the thing is, you, you, you can only move the money around. You're not lowering taxes whatsoever for anybody. You're not being any more transparent for anybody. You're just saying, we lowered your millage, and yeah, you lowered my millage. But you added to my ad valorem. My MSBU, which is a beautification one in Citrus Springs, you can add to the, you can bring that up anytime you want, okay? And I have no right as a resident of Citrus Springs to, you know, I can say I don't want it raised, but it doesn't matter, because it's the five people on the deus that make the decision. That's the same with the taxing unit. The five people on the deus are the ones making the final decision as to how much that MSTU is going to be. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this matter?
No new taxes, period. I was watching this thing from the beginning. These are ridiculous insurance prices you guys had up there, but this having more taxes read my lips. No new taxes, all right?
Chair, for public record, can I get his name?
Yeah, you need to come up and give your name.
Ray Kolofsky.
And your address, please.
4551 East View Top Lane, Inverness, I live in the county.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this? For or against? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll close the public portion. Board?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Canard?
How's this affect the folks living in the cities?
Let Aaron come for my understanding, it doesn't, but I'll call Aaron to confirm that.
At this time, it doesn't. They're not part of this. My understanding in discussions with NGN is that if they would like to be in the future, they could be.
Okay, so if we walk through this process, and I'm not opposed to putting this in place just so that people can see how much of the budget goes to the sheriff's office for whatever they want to do with it, they can see that the county commission isn't dealing with this huge pot of money to do with whatever we so desire. But if the idea, if the thought process of this board is that we're going to put this MSTU into place and then reduce the millage rate proportionately, you're going to reduce the millage rate for everybody in the unincorporated part of the county, but you're also going to reduce the millage rate for the folks in the, both cities. You're not going to pick up that revenue in the MSTU in either of the cities. So, you're, the net loss of revenue for law enforcement for residents in both cities will then have to be absorbed by everybody else living in the unincorporated part of the county, which means this, even if it's dollar for dollar, moving money from millage rate dollars to MSTU dollars, this is a tax increase for everybody who lives in the unincorporated part of the county. Unless both cities are participating, it's a tax increase for everybody who lives in the county.
Is this accurate?
Well, yeah, the, the cities are not participating. They pay, they have a contract with the sheriff. And so, they are paying funds from the city to the sheriff, and that is what the report is for. So, when the consultant comes forth and they say what can be included under the MSTU, what can be moved down, because not all of it can be, will just be covered by millage, and it will just affect the unincorporated area, because the cities are not participating in it at this time. They have a separate contract and they pay the sheriff.
This is completely new information for me, because I would have thought that because they are also county residents, that an MSTU could be applied equally across the county. And so, it, if, you know, and this is why I've been in favor of it from the beginning, is I believed it to be simply pulling millage out from the normal millage and putting it into a separate line item millage. So, it is no new taxes, it is just simply moving a line item. Commissioner Schlebo? You look like you have something on your mind.
No, I, I still have the floor.
I'm so sorry, Commissioner Canard.
That's quite all right. And I agree, Aaron is, is, of course, is exactly correct. Both cities are under contract with sheriff's office to provide additional services within the city limits. They're not required to do that. You know, this next budget, uh, this next budget cycle, if neither of the cities can come to an agreement with the, with the sheriff on the contracts, those contracts go away. Does that mean that we're going to stop providing law enforcement in the cities because they're not paying the, they're not participating in the MSTU? And there's zero law enforcement in cities? That's not going to happen. So, again, I'll say that I'm not, I'm not opposed to this, but unless we've got both cities on board and city residents willing to participate in this, this is just a tax shift from the folks living in the cities to the folks living in the unincorporated part of it.
I understand that, yeah, I understand that, that position that you're taking, and I, if that's true, then I agree with it, but that's why I was trying to get to the bottom of this, because this is, I really hate being surprised on the dice. So, and what was? You, you want to help out?
Well, I think today what we're doing is, the intent is to adopt, approve and adopt the ordinance that would allow us to execute the ordinance. We're not voting that, we're not taking action, we're just allow, this would just be a tool in our toolbox once we hear the presentation by neighbors and ghiblin that if we want to move forward, we can, if we don't, we don't. But the, we're getting way in the weeds right now. I mean, we're, we're, I think that presentation is in July, correct? All we're doing is giving us the ability to use another tool in our toolbox. That's all this today is about, that's all we're voting on.
So, there is no millage attached to the ordinance? It is simply the ability to use it. You all could never use it to levy millage, you could use it in three years, you could use it in 10 years. Until the report is brought to you and they tell you what can be included and, you know, we have those numbers, there's nothing attached to it. So, it's just to have the ability to use it if you so choose to.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Is there any other board discussion? No? I'm giving you guys plenty of time.
I guess I'll throw it out there. Has there been any contact with the cities about whether or not they would be interested in participating in an MSTU?
I have not spoken with the cities, and I don't believe that our consultant has spoken with them.
Well, we should probably work on that.
Might be getting out ahead of ourselves a little bit.
Board, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve H2A and B.
Motion by Commissioner Baze?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schlebo. Any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion carries 3-2. All right, H3.
All right, guess I'm on?
Yep, take it away.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and hello, Citrus County. Thank you all for having me here today. My name is Ryan McKinless. I represent the Florida Housing Coalition. I'm here with you all today to provide some updates and some information related to the statewide housing law and... housing law known as the Live Local Act that was passed in 2023 and amended in 2024 in this recent legislative session. So if you can move on to the next slide, please. So just a little bit about who we are and what we do. We're a statewide nonprofit organization and we provide training and technical assistance to local governments, nonprofits, and other groups for affordable housing issues, capacity building. And a lot of the technical assistance we provide is a lot like what I'm doing here today for y'all. It's explaining state and federal housing laws, funding resources and how they're structured and how you can best use them for your communities. So the nature of my presentation here today for you all is to just give you information to possibly use here in Citrus County. Next slide, please. Real quick, this is sponsored by the Florida Housing Finance Corporation as part of the Affordable Housing Catalyst Program. This is a, it's a state program that does, provides a lot of the, the training that I was just discussing. So it's what allows us to come here as an organization. We have staff statewide. We have, on my team, for example, I have a public policy background at the state. We have legal expertise, we have land use and planning expertise, and we have data. We also have people that have professional experience dealing with homelessness services. So we have a well-rounded group and we're sponsored by FHFC. So just a quick thank you for that. Real quick, just about myself, like I said, I have a public policy background. I come from Tallahassee. I drove down here this morning. Really great to be here, hadn't been here in a few years and I, and I really like it down here.
Come down nineteen?
What's that?
Come down nineteen?
I did, yeah.
It's a nice drive.
It is a nice drive and there's very little traffic, which I enjoy. But my background before coming to the coalition was I was actually with FHFC, the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, the state HFA, for about seven years. I worked in multifamily programs there on the finance side of things and funding. And then I moved over to public policy and legislative affairs with FHFC. And then I came over to the coalition about a year ago. All right, so I'm going to try to get through this all as efficiently and thoroughly as possible because as I understand it, I have about 20 minutes here today. And the Live Local Act has a huge swath of things that it has going on. So to kick things off here, next slide, please. So Live Local Amendment Bill, this was Senate Bill 328. Out of the Senate, it was sponsored by Senator Cladiot. And at the House, it was sponsored by Representative Lopez. So this was signed into law by Governor DeSantis on May 16th. And unlike a lot of other state legislation, this was effective upon being signed into law by the governor. So the Senate Bill 328, the Live Local Act Amendment Bill, or Glitch Bill, if you will, is officially law in Florida as of May 16th. Next slide, please. All right, so this is just going to take it from the top here of all that's going on for the Live Local Act at a super high level. I'm going to drill down into each of these in the, in the next slide. So funding obviously provides a huge amount of funding, an unprecedented amount of funding from the state level for affordable housing programs, provides tax incentives. That'll be a huge aspect of what I talk about here with y'all today is the tax incentives that it provides and what it means for local governments. It provides land use tools and also affects how local governments can, can process a lot of these administrative requirements for building new housing in certain areas. It firms up a lot of the publicly owned land information as it relates to affordable housing in the state. Also tightens up some of the state housing strategy, giving some more guidance on housing policy and technical assistance, which again is where we come in as an organization. So moving on. Next slide, please. And again, this drills down a little bit deeper into what I'm going to be talking about here. So the land use tools at the highest level possible. It's a mandate to allow affordable housing in commercial, industrial, mixed-use zones if the proposed affordable housing development meets certain requirements that are outlined in the law, which I will be getting into. Funding and property tax incentives. It has the missing middle property tax exemption, a local option, and some more local funding resources I'll be getting into. Publicly owned land, again, it provides more direction for local governments around the state on what is considered appropriate for affordable housing development as far as your available public lands and your surplus lands, if you want to call it that. It also has some other innovative housing solutions that I'll be getting into. Next slide, please. All right, so on the funding side of things, like I said, it was an unprecedented amount of funding at the state level for affordable housing. I worked with FHFC back in the days when housing was kind of on the back burner from a funding perspective. And that has certainly not been the case with the recent legislative sessions. So the SHIP program, the State Housing Initiative Partnership Program, got $252 million in 2023. And then the State Apartment Incentive Loan Program, this is what I really want to key in, in on for y'all here, is, SAIL is a program that's administered by FHFC. So I used to have a role in that in my prior job. And it's a, it's a no-interest loan provided to affordable housing developers that acts as gap financing that makes a lot of affordable housing developments financially feasible for these affordable housing developers. Because affordable housing developers, they could be nonprofits, they can be for-profits, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it requires a mix of different funding resources to make these things pencil out. So I'll be getting into that a little bit more later. Had an inflation response program back in 2023 that I'll briefly say. They went through that very quickly and what that was, was post-COVID and construction costs being inflated, cost of lumber, things of that nature. A lot of developments that were in the pipeline and approved and everything was ready to go hit a lot of snags and weren't able to finish what they needed to do. So they had a response program that provided $100 million for that and then a Live Local Tax Donation Program. So if you go into the next slide here, this is a quick rundown of what happened in 2024. The SHIP program, that's down just a tick. Well, more than a tick, it's at 174 million for this year. And even though it's down from the year before, that is simply a result of real estate doc stamp, doc stamp taxes being down from the year before, cooler real estate market to a certain, certain extent. But historically speaking, that is a high level of funding for SHIP. SAIL, you have $84 million for traditional sale. Traditional means sale as it usually exists. It's been around since the 90s. I'm sure many of you may, may be familiar with the SAIL program. It's been very successful. But there's an additional $150 million that the legislature put out through the Live Local Act for what they're calling innovative multifamily development. Now, in the next slide, I will get into exactly what innovative entails, what that innovative development means and what fits under that box. But that $150 million is going to be going out every year for the next 10 years and started in 2023. The Live Local Tax Donation Program got 100 million. And then you also have the My Safe Florida Home Program, got a lot of funding, plus an additional $30 million for a condominium pilot program. My Safe Florida Home Program just provides additional resiliency resources to firm up a lot of structures for hurricanes and other natural disasters. You also have a lot of other affordable housing member projects from state representatives and senators that got funded. So that's included in here as well. So by our estimate, if you include all of these housing-related programs and provisions, it's over $900 million committed from the state for housing from 2024. All right, so I said I was going to get into what innovative means. So it's all laid out in statute now, but 70% of this $150 million per year for the next 10 years, 70% of that has to go for rehab and new construction. So that's traditional, that's what affordable housing development typically does. You're either rehabbing old buildings and making them up to code, up to par for new housing, or you are, of course, building new housing. You have addressing urban infill. That kind of speaks for itself, but for y'all that, that don't necessarily know what urban infill entails, taking vacant or available or underutilized lots in more urban areas, built-out areas, and using that for housing. Mixed-use housing, that means you have other components, you have a commercial element, things of that nature, mixed-use housing there, other tenants, not just housing. And also providing housing near military installations. That was a, a big part of that 70% from the legislature. 30% of that has to be for using or leasing public lands, addressing the needs for adults aging out of foster care, meeting the needs of elderly persons and providing housing in areas of rural opportunity. Those areas of rural opportunity are designated by the governor's office, just FYI on that. So note here, Florida Housing Finance Corporation. So as I mentioned, that's a state HFA that's responsible for administering a lot of these programs. And they have discretion for how to set up the RFAs, which are Request for Applications, basically RFPs. And to simplify this as much as possible, this RFA process is really competitive because there's a finite amount of these resources for these developers. They have to enter through a really thorough application process with the state, with FHFC, and they have to meet certain experience requirements. So through these RFAs, FHFC is splitting up these different initiatives according to these statutorily required splits. So next slide, please. Innovative sale funding opportunities, these are the exact RFAs that FHFC has out there. Just wanted to put these included in the presentation for, just for reference. All this is available publicly online on the FHFC website. But as you can see there, the RFAs are geared specifically toward a lot of those innovative purposes that I'd outlined before, military installations, mixed-use, things of that nature. Next slide, please. All right, so here's the really fun part. Property tax incentives in the Live Local Act. So the first option here is a local option and it's just what it says. It's an option for local governments to enact an ordinance that provides property tax exemptions to certain affordable housing developments that meet the criteria listed there. So to be eligible, according to the Live Local Act, it has, the development that's proposed has to be for at least 50 units. And at least 20% of those units have to be set aside as affordable to households at or below 60% AMI, and that's area median income. So far, now this slide is out of date because last week we had a new jurisdiction enact this. But as of last week, there were only two jurisdictions since 2023 that have enacted, enacted this local option. That would be the City of Jacksonville and the City of St. Petersburg. Now, to my knowledge, St. Lucie County, as of last week, enacted this exemption. So just throwing that out there. The second is a nonprofit, a tax, property tax exemption for nonprofit land that is for the purpose of affordable housing and has a 99-year ground lease to serve households at or below 120% area median income. The missing middle property tax exemption. So this one has gotten a lot of attention lately because it had, it got tweaked in the past legislative session. So what they're calling the missing middle property tax exemption, some of you might know missing middle housing is something different, but what the state legislature branded as missing middle is as far as in terms of income. So how this works is it gives a property tax exemption to developments that have at least 70 units that are at or below 120% area median income. So one key thing to note here about this property tax exemption is that it's on a per-unit basis. So it's not the whole development, it's per-unit. So if you set aside a certain amount of the development, say you got 100 units, you set, you set aside 70 of them, you get property tax exemptions or could get property tax exemptions on those 70 units, but the other 31. So it's not the whole development. And the way that they break this out is if you are under 80% AMI for that unit, area median income, if it's under 80%, then you are eligible for a 100% property tax exemption on that unit. If you provide between 80 and 120% area median income affordability for that unit, you are eligible for a 75% property tax exemption. So this has been a really interesting application process because all this administrative framework didn't exist before. This is all brand new and people have been kind of trying to figure this out on the fly at the state and local level. So it starts off with the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. They process these applications from developers. They provide a certification and then that's where the buck stops with FHFC. At that point, they're hands-off. They provide a certification, they make sure that the development or the developer meets these certain requirements, and then it goes to the local level. It goes to the county property appraiser who determines if they actually get this property tax exemption. So if you go to the next slide, please. So there's a new thing in 2024 and this wasn't part of SB 328. It was part of House Bill 73, which was a taxation bill. But it amends the, this property tax exemption. So what does it do? It gives local governments an option to opt out of providing this property tax exemption. As long as the local government does certain things. So the first thing is that you have to be located and this, bear with me on this one. I know that a lot of the material that I'm providing for y'all today is a little weedy, but just bear with me. So if the taxing authority is located in a county where the number of affordable and available units at 120% area median income is greater than the number of renter households at that income level, they are eligible to opt out. And this is all determined by the Schimberg Center for Housing Studies at the University of Florida. They put out a, an annual report every year that goes through state housing needs. So they really dive deep in the data. If you guys haven't checked out, if you're interested in housing, you're interested in, hey, what's the need in my area? What's the need in Citrus County? It's a really great resource to go check out. And that's what state law is requiring that this be contingent on. So you have to have that requirement met. And then at that point, the governing body has to vote by a two-thirds majority to opt out. That part's pretty straightforward. Taxing authority must also renew this opt-out each year by January 1st. So you have to renew it annually. It's not like you can opt out one year and then you're good. You have to keep doing it year to year. And if the property owner got the exemption initially and then the local taxing authority opted out, they would be grandfathered in. So this is a quick snippet directly from the annual report from the Schimberg Center at the University of Florida. As you can see there, this is taken from Appendix Four and I can gladly send this to y'all later. I probably should have beforehand, forgive me. But as you can see there, that far right-hand column, you have that 120% area median income level. And basically, just to completely simplify it, if you are in, within a region or an MSA, if you're a county, Citrus County is within an MSA that has a positive number there, you are eligible to opt out. If you have a number that's in the negative, you are not eligible to opt out according to state law at this time. As you can see there, there are a lot of areas of the state that are right at that line. It's going to be really interesting over the next few years to forecast or try to figure out exactly how this is going to move forward at the local level, especially when this needs to be renewed every year. So that's something that everyone's trying to still figure out right now. It's still really early on. And if you all have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them or answer them to the best of my ability. So, next slide, thank you. All right, next fun thing, we got the land use mandate. So what this does is it provides new state guidance on use density height for area ratio, for area ratio, for those who don't know, is basically the proportion of a site that the built structure takes up essentially. Administrative approval standards and parking standards for affordable housing. So if a development is proposed for multifamily or mixed-use in areas that are commercial, industrial, or mixed-use and at least 40% of those units are rentals affordable for households up to 120% area median income for a period of 30 years. And if it's mixed-use, at least 65% of the use has to be for residential, then the local government can't require this, a development authorized under this preemption to obtain a zoning or land use change or a special exemption, conditional use approval, anything of that nature as it relates to use density height for area ratio or parking. So I'm going to go a little bit more into this. This has been around since 2023, but had some slight tweaks. You can go to the next slide, please. So side-by-side comparison between the Live Local Act as it was passed in 2023 and Senate Bill 328. So as you can see, it's a quick side-by-side. The only difference between 2023 and 2024 is that it added that local governments can't regulate for area ratio or parking reductions. And then for parking requirements, to go into that a little bit more in detail, it, prior, it required local governments to consider reducing parking for projects that met this preemption within half a mile of a major transit stop. But now it requires local governments to consider within a quarter mile of a major transit stop and requires local governments to reduce parking by at least 20% if the project is within half a mile of a major transit stop and eliminate projects, or eliminate parking requirements for projects that are within a transit-oriented development. A lot of that really only applies to the more urban areas of the state, just, just throwing that out there. But it is worth noting. You can go to the next slide, please. Has some new, some new provisions related to posting the administrative approval process on your website. And that's one thing that I really wanted to point out for the group here today. So going on to the next slide. Like I said, well, real quick, wanting to give some examples of like where this has been used in the state and how it's been going. So, so far, it's only been a year in. We have been trying to track and monitor where this is, land use preemptions being used and cases of it. It's hard because there's nothing in state law that requires this to be publicly posted. So it's really just informal, looking at news articles, looking at local agendas, things of that nature to see where this is happening. But, and also some word of mouth, but Walton County up in the Panhandle, they had an interesting mixed-use development. So you got multifamily apartments, you got commercial retail, you've got a financial institution. institution, hotel amenities and new infrastructure. That's kind of a, that's kind of an interesting one to say least, and that's also near the Eglin Air Force Base. So that's been like a, it's been a really interesting process over there. Providence Place in Melbourne, Florida, over on the Atlantic Side State. So last fall, they approved a planned complex for 120 units on three acres of city-owned industrial land. And then you have another example out of Hillsborough County for an elderly community. Next slide, please. So what are the best practices that we're recommending to local governments for how to implement a lot of these requirements under the Live Local Act? Obviously, it depends on staff capacity, but do mapping exercises, know your land, know what you have available, be proactive in creating ordinances and implementing policies instead of, you know, being caught flat-footed by some of these things, waiting until you get hit with it. Try to get out in front of it. I think that, and what we have been telling local governments and RTA, is that local governments still have a lot of discretion in how they plan their growth and how they plan their communities and the Live Local Act does not hinder a lot of that autonomy that you all have. So guided growth is a lot of what I'm talking about here. I think on the next slide, there is an example, well, it's on the next one, but I'll get to it. But what we're seeing right now for local policies is be clear in defining your eligible zones and districts, have compliance monitoring requirements, and I'll get into that a little bit later, but making sure that these developments are doing what they need to do to get these public incentives. And that's something that's new for a lot of local governments, which we understand. We do provide TA related to compliance monitoring, so I'd be happy to, to field questions from you or your staffs related to how to do that. Next slide, please. All right, so this is what I was talking about, guiding growth in the light of Live Local. So what we're seeing right now is that, especially Sarasota, Sarasota has been kind of on the forefront of being proactive with this. They had certain areas that were zoned industrial, commercial, that they didn't necessarily want development to be happening because of Live Local. So what they, but they also recognized that they needed more housing. So what did they do in response to that? They were proactive and they use the tools at their discretion, impact fee waivers, density bonuses, things of that nature to encourage development in certain commercial areas, or not commercial areas, but certain areas of the state corridors that they wanted the development to be in. So you're competing with Live Local in that sense. You're not trying to block Live Local, you're not doing a moratorium, you're not shutting everything down. You are simply competing with it to guide growth to other areas so that the market doesn't build housing in those areas that you don't want to be built in. So on the next slide, I think it goes a little bit more into it. So yeah, like I said, they provide four times density and, you know, granted, like obviously different situation here in Citrus County, but they have certain areas where they provide four times density bonuses for certain income levels, as you can see there. And in the interest of time, I'm not going to go too far into that. But to this point, they've received four applications, I believe, for their program here that's supposed to compete with Live Local, and they've received one Live Local application. So so far, there has been some success with what Sarasota has been doing in guiding the growth and competing with Live Local, and that's something we've been trying to communicate to other local governments. Next slide, please. So compliance monitoring, like I said, it's, the Live Local Act doesn't actually provide a lot of direction on how local government should monitor this, only that you need to monitor it. So, and that's not the only kind of, kind of broad aspect of it, but that means that a lot of this, oh yeah.
Commissioner Schlebal?
Yeah, of course.
Sorry, this is riveting, but.
That's the first, that's the first time I've heard anybody say riveting about, about this, so thank you.
So is Sarasota County doing these incentives to kind of combat the taking things off the tax rolls? Is that what you were saying or are they still going to be off the tax rolls?
No, they're not doing it from a tax roll perspective. They're doing it from the perspective of, I believe that they had certain plots of land that they had planned for their own governmental purposes that would have been eligible for Live Local Act developers to come in and build on it. And to prevent that from happening because they wanted to use that land for other purposes, that's why they competed with it. I don't think it was from a taxing perspective, it was from a, we want to use this land for other things perspective.
They didn't want to be dictated or mandated to do what the state is saying?
Yeah, it was a way to, like I said, compete with it in that you are not going against state law, but you're providing other incentives in other areas to steer it away from where it otherwise would have been. And again, this coincides with, well, you know, they said to themselves, well, there are certain areas we don't want this to be, but we also recognize that there is a need for housing in our community. So how do you kind of juggle both of those things, I think was, was their approach there?
Very good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And I know I've been trying to talk fast, I've been trying to get through a lot of material here for y'all today, but I should have mentioned, please interrupt me anytime. We have a sample Lura, it's a land use restriction agreement for local governments to use if they want to for setting a lot of these compliance monitoring requirements. So feel free to reach out to us if your staff would be interested in that. Real quick, local enforcement example, I'm not going to read all through this in the interest of time, but check out Titusville. I'd be more than happy to provide a lot of these documents to you. They have a lot of great resources out there. They've been very, very proactive when it comes to Live Local at the, at the local level with the city of Titusville. Next slide, please. All right, this is the last big thing, using publicly owned land for affordable housing. So Florida's had surplus land laws, as some of you may know, going back to the 2000s, I believe 2007. And what the Live Local Act did was it updated these laws to add some additional requirements to it, particularly as it relates to reporting this. So previously, there weren't really any reporting requirements for these inventories of public land that local governments think could be appropriate for use as affordable housing. But now it's a requirement that these need to be posted online. So what does quote-unquote "appropriate" for affordable housing mean? That's a great question. They don't tell you. So that is again, up to the discretion of the local government, which we see as an opportunity. Go to the next slide, please. Using public lands for affordable housing and what is appropriate? So because this is up to the discretion of the local government, again, I think that this is an opportunity for local governments to craft their policies for publicly owned land in a way that fits their local growth strategy. So take a look at, obviously, the available surplus land that you have in your inventory. It's different for every local government. I'm sure Citrus County has its own unique situation as far as its available public lands. Take a look at site characteristics. Obviously, the shape and existing zoning will determine in large part what kind of housing could possibly be built on the land. But don't write out some of the more irregular or smaller shaped sites because those could be useful for single-family homeownership opportunities. One thing that we're seeing from Escanby and Pensacola, way up in Northwest Florida, is they recently started a new program using some of their public lots that are urban infill, they're small, they couldn't fit, you know, a multifamily or even like a duplex on it or townhomes. But what they wanted to do, because they're more interested in homeownership opportunities, they used those smaller irregular plots of land for single-family homes and they provided a down payment assistance program through the local government that so far has seen a lot of interest and a lot of success. They partnered with the Habitat for Humanity locally. So that's one thing you can do there. Look at where the land is in relation to jobs, transit, other amenities. I mean, any residential housing you build, citizens, residents are going to want to be close to where the jobs are, where the amenities are, grocery stores, pharmacies, things of that nature. A lot of these are already built into local processes, but it's worth mentioning nonetheless. And obviously, environmental considerations and whether it's needed for other purposes. Next slide, please. So I'm going to leave y'all with this, hit it one more time. This is like just something we try to have in most of our Live Local Act presentations, especially the local governments, in that Live Local Act did a lot of things, an unprecedented amount of funding. I'm not going to go through everything again, but obviously, Live Local acted a broad range of things when it comes to state housing policy. But there's a lot of things that it didn't do, which is a huge opportunity for local governments to still play a huge role in how your community approaches development, how your community approaches building and how your community approaches housing. There are still so many things that you can do that goes beyond Live Local. And one thing that we want to convey to local governments is that because, yes, the state had a huge recognition of a housing problem, but that doesn't mean that, you know, you should necessarily take your foot off the gas at the local level. There's still a lot of things that you can do that go beyond what Live Local does or does other things. So I think that's my last slide. Not sure where we are with time. I know that that was a lot of information that I just kind of spewed out there for y'all. So if y'all have any questions, I'm more than happy to take them. Or if we don't have time, there's my contact information as well as a couple of members of my team. Cody's our chief legal and policy officer, he's our legal expertise, and then Ally is our resident planner. She's a certified planner based out of Tampa. And yeah, please feel free to reach out to us anytime you have questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Bays, Commissioner Schlebal? No, all right.
It was a good presentation, thank you.
It was, and thank you for your time and I'm going to, you know, I've already read it a few times, I'm going to reread it. Thank you for coming down from Tallahassee, appreciate your time.
Thank you, I'll have to be here.
Thank you for your patience.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Todd Hockert, I'm with the Florida Department of Health. Today, I'm representing the Citrus County Opioid Task Force as their chairperson. I'm here today with Shelley Katz from Lutheran Services of Florida to provide you a summary of the activities of the Opioid Task Force Subcommittee. Next slide. If you remember back in December 12th, during a commission meeting, you allowed us to take the lead in review and approve for funding those agencies and organizations that submitted projects that fit the criteria in the opioid settlement funds. A subcommittee was brought together and reviewed the projects as they were given to us with the assistance of LSF, with their education and their projects forms, and made it very easy for those agencies to request the funding for their projects. In total, we had 13 projects that were approved to be funded and those were forwarded to LSF for their work with work orders and contracts. I think in your background information, we provided a list of those agencies and the funding that they received. Next slide. We had a pretty good group to make up the subcommittee of both government and we had a community member involved and then those agencies that worked directly with those with opioid use disorder. Next slide. So I'd like to turn it over to Kelly, Shelley Katz now for her part of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd, and thank you commissioners for having us here today. I'm here, like Todd said, from LSF Health Systems. We are the behavioral health managing entity for 23 counties in Northeast and North Central Florida. And we were given the responsibility to work with the counties that have population under 300,000 to help them manage and disperse and account for the opioid settlement funds that have come through the opioid settlement. And so I want to commend the Opioid Task Force here in Citrus County. They've done a marvelous job of really identifying projects that align very well with the intent of the settlement. There are core strategies and allowable uses that were provided in the settlement and our job really, the way I see it, is to provide technical assistance and honestly to make it as easy as possible for the county to get these funds into services that are identified by the community as necessary and needed and in alignment. So this task force did, like I say, a great job. They've identified several populations that are at significant risk of complications from opioid use disorder like incarcerated individuals, pregnant and postpartum women, youth at risk. They invested in expanding access to service on weekends and same-day access for people needing medication-assisted treatment. They have done some prevention, really a very good, broad alignment with the intent of the settlement. Next slide, please. And so this is in your packet, this is a list of, of like I say, the variety of projects that were approved. And so, next slide, you can go like two more. Thanks. So this was year one, it was a startup year. It took us all some time to navigate the requirements of the settlement, to get the agreements in order. We've executed all, I think, but one of the agreements that we're still trying to finalize, some of the legal questions. So there were some one-time expenditures that were not going to be recurring, some programs in startup. One of the things that we at LSF did was advocate very strongly with the state, with Department of Children and Families, that these dollars carry forward without restriction to the counties that they were allocated to. Our contracts with the state often have limits on what we can carry forward and what we can't, and we were successful in ensuring that these dollars that unexpended this year will carry forward into next year, remain with Citrus County and be available to the task force or in the commission to identify the use for those funds next year. So. The next steps now, we're working on finalizing the plans for next year, on billing out our final invoices and making available to the county the final expenditures so that you all have the information that's required to be entered into the opioid data management system for the state. We'll be able to give you how much has been expended, what has been expended on, and then working, the hope, if you all approve with the task force again, to work on next year's plans to determine how to use the remaining funds and the ones for next year as well.
Thank you, appreciate it. Board, any comments, questions? Appreciate all the hard work, thank you.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure, honestly, working with the county, enjoyed it.
Oh, could you say that louder again for the record, please?
No, I'm, I'm serious, I was telling Todd before we came up here, it has been so rewarding for us at LSF to get to interact with the, the people here in the counties who are doing the work and the passion of your EMS teams and your local providers who are doing really, really good work. So we've really enjoyed it.
Thank you, that makes me feel really good about it, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that settles H4, we are going to go back to open to the public. Solid hour and 12 minutes later.
Good afternoon, my name is John Labriola, I live in Inverness and I'm here today as a citizen of Citrus County and a member of the Republican Executive Committee. Back in February, the Republican Executive Committee passed a resolution urging you all to pass, to pass your own resolution condemning the multiple unprecedented political prosecutions and use of lawfare against President Donald Trump by the Biden Justice Department and the Democratic Party and a blatant attempt at election interference. The REC voted to mail this resolution to all of you and urge you to pass a resolution of your own. The REC member who sponsored the resolution sent follow-up emails to each of the five commissioners, but none of you agreed to place it on the commission's agenda. Less than two weeks ago, Donald Trump was convicted by a rigged New York jury on 34 counts of falsifying business records in connection with hush money payments to Stormy Daniels under a novel legal theory that had never been tried before. The statute of limitations had run out on the misdemeanor offense, so Soros-backed District Attorney Alvin Bragg, famous for downgrading violent crimes, tied it to another crime during the closing arguments. And far-left Judge Juan Merchant allowed the jury to select one of three, not telling anybody what actual crime it was connected to. So all five of you ran as Republicans because you know it's the only way to get elected in Citrus County and were, you know, outnumbered Democrats by a 3 to 1 margin. And no American president has ever been the victim of the lawfare that we're seeing with Donald Trump. If we, if we just idly buy and do nothing, I believe this is going to turn into a banana republic, if it's not already one. So I think what, what we're asking you to do is, now that he's been convicted, if you would bring that resolution forward, add the, you know, the fact that he's been convicted and condemn this, because you all ran as Republicans, you all got the benefit of that by the, the Howard Flea Market does your, your candidate signup sheets. They actually do that work for you because you're a Republican and, and they give you that benefit. So I think if you're going to run as Republicans, you should actually act as Republicans. Otherwise, just run as NPAs or Democrats because, you know, we really, we really need to get a handle on this situation with, with the runaway political prosecutions. And we're asking you basically to put this resolution on your next agenda, condemning the, the Trump conviction and just do the will of the people, this is a 70% conservative county, we're asking you, please, to put it on the next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker? Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name's Lala Sanders. I live here in Inverness. I mailed all of you on everything that John spoke about in the resolution back in February. I got one response with, okay, thank you. But it is yet to be on the agenda with you, the commissioners, to come up with a resolution of your own on the political persecutions on Trump. I myself have volunteered at the flea market to give out cards to have some of you that wanted to be on the ballot out there. There's someone that's running against you that's very dedicated to the work and doesn't care whether she's running against one of you or not. So we just, in respect, in respect to just going forward, last night there was like an incident, and I think that our free speech to one individual was silenced. I myself like to transparency. If somebody tells me or calls somebody out a liar, I expect to hear both sides instead of going on a rabbit trail, saying it's here, it's here, and it's not here. And if you're going to call someone something like that, I feel you should always have the paper with you or the link or whatever it may be so that we can see it. So going back to the resolution, I would hope that you would consider putting it on the ballot. Political persecution is not fair, and we all know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Mike O'Connell from Floral City. I'd like to speak on the resolution that John Labriola spoke about and Lala referenced. We're all Republicans. The REC, and I'm a member, first four speakers on this topic are all members of the REC. The REC voted to ask you to make a resolution because that says something. And as leaders, we really need you folks to say things when something important, and remember someday, history is going to look back at this time, and it's not going to look, it's not going to look well for anyone who didn't speak up, who had the position in the seat, to speak up and say something and do something. So the REC members are the elected party members of the Republican Party of this county. And we're asking you to please pass this resolution. Please put it on the agenda. Let's just get it on the agenda for now, okay? That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi there. Good afternoon, board. Jesse Rumson from La Canto. And I'd like to extend a thank you for everyone that showed up at the forum yesterday for the commissioners. I thought it went pretty well. Another thing is, I would like to speak for the voiceless people of IV4 and to say that it's disgusting that we haven't gotten around to resolving this conflict after years of it being put before the board. Another thing would be Officer Lahera. I believe that is vitally important that we stick up as a community for those who put their lives on the line for us, and I think that we owe it to them to resolve that situation as best we can. And if the board needs to pick that up, then the board should pick that up. Another thing is the constitutional offices. We need to be fully transparent with how we're spending the taxpayer money, and if there's any black budgets or missing items, then we should just pass on the budget until they can provide those itemized receipts for what they're using the money for, along with this young gentleman over here. I believe that we shouldn't be raising any taxes or adding new taxes. And as far as the resolution goes with the REC, I believe that even though it's kind of lip service for the board to pass these sort of things, I believe that it brings unity between the people they represent and the board itself, and that it's good to hear how the community feels about different things that are put before the country as a whole. So thank you very much for hearing me tonight. Have a good night.
Next speaker.
Hi, Gary McClintock. Is that all you need?
Your address, please.
Oh, 4285 East Hammer Street, Hernando. Yeah, I'm a resident here for about a year and a half now, and I'm a conservative. And I'm here to speak on what John spoke of, the resolution. What's being done to Donald Trump is being done to me, too. I'm losing my voice. My freedoms are being taken away. And that voice I'm losing, you guys could replace it because you got the power to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs. When I go through the agenda, I take my time, and then I go back and I figure out what are the most important things to me and what do I need to do, need to print out on backups. Well, you guys brought up the agenda at the beginning, and then you say we're going to add this or subtract that. It's amazing. I wanted to do E5. I wanted to do E1F. I wanted to do E1J. Okay? I had questions and concerns about different things on different items. On E1F, it was very disheartening to see that we're talking about 13 weeks, it's going to cost $14,300. A couple pages later, the $1,200 per month is going to go to $1,100 per month. And I sat there and I figured out, well, are we going to spend $15,600 and pay for 13 months? Or $14,400 for 12 months? Or $14,300? And then you said we're going to skip that for now. Okay? So when we also, when we come into the meetings, you have time certens or you have the public hearings. Well, the public hearings are very, very timely. The gentleman that got up today, he was, he was supposed to start at 1:40. And when he started, he said that he figured he had 15 to 20 minutes. Well, if you look on our schedule, he had five. Why are we setting a schedule that's not realistic? So if you're coming to a meeting, you should be able to say realistically, well, I don't need to see that because it doesn't pertain to what I want. Why would you come to a meeting at 1:30 when the person doesn't actually appear till 2:20? I would like to see a few changes. We've got time certens coming up from the board for, I think it's July 26th. You got four of them. They're scheduled, or five of them, they're scheduled one minute apart each. 1:45, 1:46, 1:47, 1:48, and then 1:51. There is no way you're going to be able to do all those budget, 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 budget in that timeframe. I, as a citizen, would like to see something that is more realistic. If you know that it's going to be a 10- or 15-minute presentation, put the next time certain, you know, 20 minutes out so people can understand and realize. And I know my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ray Kolovsky, 4551 East View Top Lane in Inverness. Yes, I'm supporting John Labriola's.
Yeah, did you already speak at Open to the Public?
Yeah, I spoke before.
No? Oh, H2, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I knew the other thing, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, really, we got to support Donald Trump. We're all Republicans here, and we don't want this liberal bias to be insidious in this county, to come in through the libraries or wherever it's coming from. But we have to do that. We have to stand together. The only reason why people don't like Donald Trump, you might not like his texts, sometimes he boasts, you know, about things that he is, but they are true. He might say he's worth $10 billion when he's only worth $5 billion, but that's not a lie. He's rich. But the only reason why people don't like him, especially the liberals, is he puts a mirror in front of their face, and they don't like that because they know deep inside what they are. They hate themselves. And that's why a lot of people go out and have parades, put rainbows out. Oh, we're proud, we're proud, we're proud. No, they're not proud. They try to make us think that they're proud, but they're hurting inside. They have problems, big problems. And as long as we face the truth, sometimes it takes more courage to face the truth and speak about the truth. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. And you have not spoken at the general open to the public?
Not about this. No. Not about this. Is that fair?
No. Thank you. Didn't he speak at general open?
I did.
Yeah. This is the continuation of general open.
Oh, yes. Okay. So we can't add comments?
Yep, there's no double-dipping. Sorry. Is there anyone else to speak at general open to the public? All right. Seeing none, we'll close open in the public. Board, any comments? Commissioner Canard.
I'll get started. We'll deal with the baby box issue later in the agenda, and, you know, if we want to do a workshop on IV4 to listen to any new ideas that they have, but right now, the only solution that I've heard is a $30 million solution, and...
35 or 36, I think.
What was it?
35 or 35, 36.
But if they've got something that they're willing to undertake out there and cover the cost of, I'd be willing to hear it. So, that's all.
Commissioner Pennigan?
Sure. IV4, I know I've received some emails, too, about the workshop. People are asking for the workshop, and the reason I have not responded back to that is I have not yet had a chance to ask staff and especially our attorney. Every workshop that we've had so far is always this, these five people talking and staff and no one from the public, and it sounds like you want a workshop where IV4 residents can work with all commissioners at the same time. So I don't have all the information on that yet. I'm sure we can, we can find that out. We will be addressing the baby box, but it seems like every, the few people that have come up here, it's always the same, which we'll talk about, and how I have proved that the, there's no, there's no proof for the scare tactic of if you don't do this, you'll have dead babies in the street, like, like we're doing that. So that's the only argument I've heard, and we're going to debunk all that later. Time certens. Janet, I asked the same question. Why don't we do it every five minutes when they're so put out? And it's, well, if we finish early, especially the 501s, if it's quick, you don't want to be sitting around forever, so they kind of stack them up. I agree, we should space out our afternoon time certens a little bit more because we could do business in between. And the last one, the Trump resolution, you know, the person that asked, I gave that person the respect of a phone call and explained, I did bring a resolution up. It was an uphill battle and that I was willing, willing to do because I heard concern from our citizens, a very bipartisan concern about what open borders would do to our community, and the results could be for this board to have to take care of those issues later. I also told, and I am an REC member, that if they had any commissioner up here that wanted to bring that forward, I would back that commissioner. I just didn't think that was going to happen, and it didn't. The difference is, for the open borders that we were concerned about, it could leave results where this board would have to take care of. On the other hand, we don't have any power over the DOJ. We just don't. And then would we, who would we, who would we send that to? Because all of our representatives have already spoken out about this, which probably, I know I have, and maybe the others of us have personally. So I don't think it's a lack of caring and concern. It's what do we do with it if we had it? We would want to affect change. So I encourage you to have petitions, send it to the president, send it to those that represent you in Congress, and see if we could affect change that way. That's just my humble advice. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Baze? Commissioner Schlebal?
I agree with Commissioner Canard. If we can get an IV workshop, IV4 workshop, I would love to attend and hear any new ideas. But like that was said, if we could really interact with the IV4 residents. Thank you for your kind words. Terry wasn't expecting that. We're so used to getting beat up, but I do appreciate all the kind words from the audience and the citizens of Citrus County. Talk about the baby box, the baby incubators, and, you know, somebody brought up medically retiring Deputy Lahera. As much as this community stands behind Deputy Lahera, that's really way out of our scope. That is the sheriff's employee, and I know that we all support him and pray for him, so I don't think that's anything that we could do to, to help him with his retirement. And that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Baze, do you have anything?
I did send an email to staff and requested for some consideration for an IV4 workshop, regardless of, I think it's just time that we have a workshop. I think we should listen to them. We should be able to interact. I mean, they have, you know, there's lots of information. We hear bits and pieces of it, but I think if we were able to talk one-on-one and explain some of the differences in a workshop, I think it would be helpful for them, and I think it would be helpful for the rest of the citizens in Citrus County. So I'm all in favor of having a workshop. I think it's their right.
I will further address IV4. The person that keeps saying things about, I don't have any more tools in my toolbox. It was a pretty doggone big toolbox, and I spent three years picking out one after another and having multiple staff meetings, meetings with residents. I brainstormed with some of the folks in this room around a table, trying to figure out a way out of this. And everything, we have multiple agencies, I'm the one that put multiple agencies in the room to try to figure this out. And just because, anyway, it's just been difficult. So I finally came to the point where the letter to Ashley Moody that would get referred to FDLE was the big plan because that 35, 36 million, we can't afford, even if you could afford the MSBU, the county cannot afford to float the MSBU. So the, after three years, I'm telling you guys, three years of every single week working on IV4, and I have been through there multiple times, thankfully, I own a four-wheel-drive vehicle. People come up to me and say, what's this, you know, why are they expecting us to pay for the roads? They're sand roads. I live on a sand road, and it's great. I said, is your sand road like this? Because the hills make all the difference in the world. The closed basin makes all the difference in the world. And so I say, you should go take a four-wheel-drive vehicle and drive through there, and you'll see exactly what they're facing. So my sympathy remains with IV4. To be absolutely clear, I have said this before, but I will say it again, I have tried so hard to find a resolution for this, and if another commissioner or one of the residents can find a resolution, I'm going to be the first, that we haven't already had shot down for various legal reasons or another agency's policies, I am going to be the first one to say, thank you, because I do want to have it fixed. And I think that's about it. Someone also said, get familiar with other districts. I agree. I believe everyone on this board has been through there. I hope they have. I personally have gone into other districts the three and a half years I've been on the board and solved issues in other districts when another commissioner was out or it just came to me or for whatever reason. So I think we all work for the benefit of all residents in the county, and we do represent 170-something thousand people, and it's a daily job to try to balance all of those needs and desires. So that's all. So, that's all I got. Anyone else want to chime in or we'll move on? All right, we're going to close open to the public comment and we're going to move on to regular business.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the bids E1A through H. Skip E1I, I would like to have discussion on that one, and E1J approval.
I would like, I, I, I'm not going to be in favor of that because you didn't pull F.
I couldn't remember the number. So, okay, I take that back. Dact that. Does anybody else have one that they want to talk about?
We're pulling, we're pulling F and I?
So, E1A through E. E1G, E1H, skip E1I, E1, I'm sorry, E1G, E1H, skip E1I, E1J.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on those? And to be clear, the public comment will not be on E1F or E1I.
Janet Baric, Citrus Springs. E1I is not the road. It's E1J on mine. And that was the one I thought we were going to skip and go back to.
Okay, thank you.
You know, that, that's, that's, my concern is we are skipping the road one for right now.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close open to the public. Just to confirm, Commissioner Schlebaugh, you are wanting to pull continuing services contract for construction services, solid waste, scale house, re-roof, Cardiff construction, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
So, E1F is first?
Yes, ma'am. All right, I am going to make a motion that we table that.
I do have some more information if I could bring forward.
You bet.
Ken, could you come forward, please? We talked earlier, but he just nudged me a few minutes ago. So, I want to make sure you have the most updated information before you make your decision.
Good afternoon. Ken Cheek, Water Resources Director. Just want to answer the question earlier. It's $14,300 that pays for 13 four-week periods. We are concerned that we would lose the space on this billboard if it's not approved today, but it doesn't jeopardize the grant as far as we know.
Okay.
SWIFTMAD has already approved it as it is with this location. So, we'd have to find another location if we don't want to put it on this billboard.
Thank you. For discussion purposes, does someone want to give me a second to table? Anyone?
Oh, um...
I've got, I've got a question. Ken, is the grant specific to billboard advertising or there more?
This one is, yes.
Okay.
It's for this purpose.
Okay.
So, for discussion, I will second that?
Thank you. So, this was brought to me by a very involved citizen. And his, he's been a big fan of the strategic planning process and the tagline, "Where nature and community thrive." And he'd really like to know why we have LED billboards in a county when that's not very natur-y. And as we grow, we have the opportunity for us to become more, more of what is good in the world and less of the city sort of look with LED billboards and all that. I did not understand that that billboard already exists. I thought it was going to be a new construction billboard. And that's why I was like, oh, no, we, we have got to have a separate discussion about this and see if maybe we need to look at our county policy on what types of billboards we allow, if, if any. If it already exists, then obviously it already is permitted. So, you know, that makes me think we need to go ahead and consider doing it. But because you said there was no time sensitivity, I was willing to table it to make sure that we have all of our, we're all in agreement on where we're going and what we're doing before we actually vote on it. So...
My only comment in regard to that is we were looking for a billboard in the vicinity of where that one is. At the time we were looking, we understood that there was not another alternate location available. So, we'll have to go back and look for another spot. If you guys have been down 19, you know, we had a spot down there by Sugar Mo Woods that we were using. We wanted to move to a more central area within our service territory. So, that's why we chose that area. So...
And to be clear, the citizen and myself are all about getting that message out. So, you know, and, so I'm not trying to cause trouble where there doesn't need to be trouble, but I did want to have a discussion. Madam Attorney, do you have any, just, any ideas on, any input on this whatsoever? In terms of long-term trying to change things? We will not be able to rescind this billboard, but could we still look at policies on this?
Policies on the types of billboards that are permitted in the county? That, of course, you can always look at those types of things. The issue with billboards that is somewhat tricky is it is a free speech constitutional issue. So, if you're going to look into our sign policy, that's a consideration.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted your input.
Yes, ma'am.
Board, any ideas? Help me out here. Thoughts?
I'm, I'm fine to move on with it so he can do what he needs to do for the grant.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open it to the public.
This is on the motion to take.
Would anyone like to speak? No? Okay. Board, what, where are you going with this? Because, you know, we can just go ahead and vote on it and it can fail and then we'll vote to approve, but...
I made the second for discussion. I, I think we should move on.
Okay.
Or you, you can rescind the motion and the second.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, I'll rescind my second?
All right. I'll rescind my first.
Motion to approve E1F?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a bid for a new roof at the Scale House. And only one of four responded to the bid request. I think it came in very high. Figured out it's like 1,638 square feet. And the 110,92320 is very high to me. So, I, I wanted to talk about, well, let me do this. Let me, well, I have to make a motion for discussion, right? I had a little brain thing. So, I'd like to make a motion to pull this item and that we could have a bid, rebid on this and try to get continuing service for this, for the facilities. Instead of having contractors bid this, have roofers bid this. And maybe we can get a better price. I know that the county is working on that. So, my motion is to pull this item.
Hold her table.
I'd like to pull this item and have it rebid.
Okay. And I will second it for sake of discussion. Mr. Howard? Does, do you want to answer any of this or have Marcelo?
I'll have Marcelo come forward and discuss this, please.
So, why he's doing that is I know that we've been working on continuing service for facilities. And I'd like to go even a little deeper with specific disciplines. If that is possible, Mr. Howard? Just to have that discussion that maybe we could get a little bit more local people bidding, local roofers and different things. I think it's just too much money.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Marcel Taffanari, Public Works Director and County Engineer. Yes, thank you. We do have continuing services with four contractors. The other three just were not interested in bidding this. I did go out there and take some photos and discussed it with staff. We, you know, it was very, you know, we are very busy in Public Works with a lot of divisions. So, I think rebidding this would be prudent. We want to get the best price and we want to get a good contractor. And then I'll work with staff and procurement, how we can get a, a disciplined-driven continuing services contract. We want to get locals, just like we did for the roadway contracts. And we want everybody bidding it if they want the work. And so, we'll work on that. That shouldn't be a problem.
Chairman, Mr. Howard, thank you for letting your staff come up and talk about this. I am by no means telling you what to do. I just felt like this bid was a little high. And if maybe we had a little bit of broader reach on different disciplines, we might get a better price.
I'm working with staff too, actually, because Commissioner Finnegan had brought it up before in the past, trying to work what I call a reverse trade show. So, we are working on that at some point to encourage the locals if we can do that. I've had a lot of discussions with the locals as I crisscross this county. A lot of them just have a lot of work right now. So, that's been challenging even for them with their staffing levels and things like that. So, but anything we can do to keep it local, we want to keep it local. That's important.
And my final thought on this, thank you, Marcelo. I know you all are very busy and I, I know I appreciate it. I just want to say that for, a lot of times, people come up, public, and they tell us how we're just not watching their tax dollars. But I know for a fact, all five of us are really watching these contracts and paying attention so that we can try to save money wherever we can. And in this case, I think there's an opportunity to save taxpayers' dollars. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Good call.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I just want us to be careful with our language. So, there was no solicitation for this. It was a request for quotes from our continuing services providers. We keep, I keep hearing the word bid and responders and things like that. But just so we know, we didn't, this was not a procurement where we went out with a solicitation. It was just a request for quotes. And only one of our three continuing services providers was interested in giving us a quote. So, it sounds like maybe you're requesting that we go out for a solicitation rather than a quote or ask different continuing service providers for a quote. But I'm sure staff will ferret all that out.
That sounds fantastic.
I just want to make sure we're using the right terms.
So, solicitation, not bids?
Okay, thank you.
Quotes? I'm sorry.
Quotes?
Quotes rather than solicitation with bids. With bids, okay. Sorry.
All right, would anyone from the public like to speak on E1I? Going once, going twice, seeing none, is there any further board discussion?
Chair?
Pardon?
Since the bid word is addressed, do you want to modify that motion?
I'm so glad when you keep us on the straight and narrow. Commissioner Schlebaugh?
Yes, ma'am. I already forgot the word you want me to use.
May, may, Madam Chair, may I ask the clerk to read back the motion?
Yes.
Motion to pull item E1I and request a rebid.
How about pull it and...
Pull the item and request staff to obtain alternative proposals. Sorry.
Attorneys. I would like to modify my motion.
To what she said?
To, to pull item E1I for modification. For proposal, thank you.
Do you want me to type what she said?
Yes.
I guess if she wants to make the motion, but I, yeah.
I don't.
And I'll, I, I will amend my second.
I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you. I need the help.
Is there any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. E1 normally goes a lot faster. Okay, E2.
Motion to approve E2.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. This is the speed round, so you better be up and moving if you want to do open to the public.
Motion to approve E3.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E4. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Baze, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on E4? Seeing none, all, any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E5.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on E5?
Chair?
Yes.
I'm the agenda stated A.
A, sorry. E5A.
Motion to approve E5A.
Janet Baric, Citrus Springs resident. I read through what, you know, you got for backups and it still seems like this freebie baby box, as they said, is not going to be free to the citizens of Citrus County. There are attachments here, attachments there. We have had no problems up to this point. There should be no reason to have a baby box. It is not a medical thing. It's not approved by anybody. Or if you read all the paperwork, the back, you know, the backup paperwork, it's not approved by the, anybody. Okay? And just to say we have a baby box, we don't, we have the services that people need. If a woman wants to get rid of a child because she cannot no longer keep it and it's only within so many days, she takes it to the hospital. She takes it to the fire station. The box is not going to make any difference, except the fact that instead of giving it to a person, you're still in, in a, you know, supposedly sterile environment. And who says it's sterile? Who's going to keep cleaning it on a daily basis or every eight-hour basis? Okay, that's not free. Every time I, I read these things, you know, you guys want to do something, it's nice to do it. Oh, it's not going to cost any money, but there are residual costs. What about insurance? Is there going to be extra insurance because we're allowing people to do this? Instead of giving it person to person? I mean, when, when, when somebody wants to surrender a child to a fireman, it's person to person. When they want to surrender it at a hospital, it's person to person. Okay? This takes all of that away. But somebody is going to be responsible when something happens to a child that's put in a box and it's not taken care of immediately. It's not a good idea. I don't like it whatsoever. I don't like the box idea. I don't like the fact that the county could be on the hook for whatever. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, any board discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Well, I think I'll, I'll take you through my journey with this. Obviously, I was out speaking about it some months ago. And I hate to admit, because I don't lose sleep over most things that, that we decide on here, but I did because of my background and experience. And I felt like I did a huge disservice to the women and children that I spent most of my life helping, victims of domestic violence and their children. So, for people to say that I, I wouldn't understand, I, I may still be considered the expert in Citrus County, as I once was, for at least victims of domestic violence and their children. And I have helped thousands of them in need. Let me repeat that. Women and children in our community, I have helped thousands of them. And I did that over a span of 18 years. I have had hundreds and hundreds of hours of training. I have been certified by the state of Florida for confidentiality privilege. I rose to a level where I could certify other people for the state of Florida. So, I do have lots of experience, not only helping them on an outreach basis, but sheltering them. And a lot of them obviously had, had many needs. Some, some were pregnant, some had newborn babies, some had older children. had addiction issues, uh, it goes on and on. So what I want to talk to this board about, it, it's two-pronged. One, I'm going to make a very clear argument and I hope you agree um, with new information of why you don't need this. And I hope that you would agree. If your mind is solidly made up and I cannot convince you with what I have, I would like to mitigate what I feel like would be the damages that would occur if the county would move ahead with this. But let's start with the update to the safe haven law of Florida, which will become effective on July 1, 2024. And it is more helpful to parents. Uh, the current law that we have right now allows a baby to be abandoned by the safe haven law to a medical professional, fire station, hospital, uh, seven days old or less. The new law expands that to 30 days old. So that's going to be a help to families that are struggling. The other big change to the law that I think is going, that eradicates the need for this is a parent in distress that wants to abandon the baby safely can call 911 and it can be completely anonymous. This goes into effect July 1. So you don't have to call 911 to your house. You can call and have an EMS provider meet you anywhere. Um, and we've all got real used to putting masks on and everything. So, I mean, the person could hide their identity. So this is going to be an easy and confidential exchange. Why is this so much better than putting the baby in a box for, for a confidential exchange? And it's health and wellness of the mother and the baby. I have helped many, many people and what I realized in 18 years of experience of helping thousands of people, people will suffer in silence unless they have another human to help them. And how wonderful, uh, and it, we'll get into how it takes the county off the hook later. But for a woman's health, you don't know where she's had this baby and what kind of distress she's in. But a medical provider taking that baby one is way better for the baby because we really don't know how long that baby would be left in there. If that fire station happens to be empty at the time because they are on a call, it'll ring into 911 and someone will get there eventually. And I cannot imagine the pain of the mother opening that drawer, putting the baby in, it's locked, nobody's there. The baby's screaming or crying inside. The mother tries to open that box and cannot do it. And who knows when someone's going to get there? Hopefully, uh, i- in a decent amount of time, every minute would feel like an hour, I'm sure, to that mother. But more so for the mother's health also. An EMS provider can say, "Do you need any attention? Can I help you?" That's all it takes many times to help people. Is there something you need? Can I help you? And it's anonymous. The other great thing about the law that Florida has in place is that a mother can give birth safely in a hospital and tell them, "I am not leaving here with this baby." And they say, "Okay, we'll take care of this for you." And it's still anonymous. There are ways that we can really care for the safety of the mother and the child better than we don't ever get to, to help the mother and we, we cause more concerns for the baby than we need to. If we have a safe exchange, there's zero risk to the newborn. I have a, a lot, so, so bear with me. So all of this with this, with this law, I think it's fantastic. There's no risk to the county. It's eliminated. We don't have to have a contract. We don't have to worry about, as I pointed out in a recent article, we have to guarantee the temperature of that, but we can't add anything to it. You know, my, my journey through this was when I was so opposed, um, I thought it was absurd and I just thought everyone could see that. But when I realized they didn't, and I went home and had to ponder this, I realized people don't have the experience that I have. And when you have that really emotional heartstring tug, which that is how the founder of these boxes gets it, it's basically the threat. Do this or else. Do this or you're going to have dead babies in the streets. You're going to have dead babies in the dumpsters. No one wants that, right? So you're a monster if you don't have this box. And that's just not true. And put that on the back burner. We're, we're going to, to get to that later. Um, so I went to Ocala and I saw the box and I actually got to meet the person that ended up adopting the baby and it's wonderful. And then I understood, people that want this, it's coming from a very good place in their hearts because maybe they don't understand, they don't have all the information, but who doesn't want to save babies? I want to save babies too, but I want to save their mothers also. And I want to eliminate all risk to both mother and child. I think that because Florida law is so good now, especially coming July 1, that any monies that have been raised, how wonderful if they were so concerned to educate about this law. Educate how you can stay completely confidential. Educate how the mother can get good care and so could the baby. To me, that's going to be the, the best thing in our community. I did ask myself a question though. Why are there proponents of this in our community? Why are they asking the county to do this? Why are they asking to do it at a fire station that we have some issues? They have to go, they have to leave that station at times. Why aren't they asking our community hospitals? Where medical staffs are 24/7, always, but they haven't. Why are they trying to put the burden on the county and not going where it would even make sense? Although I don't like the idea at all. Um, there are many groups opposed to these. One is the National Safe Haven Alliance, which is the oldest, longest-running, uh, nonprofit group that is actually trying to help with the baby abandonment. They help the mothers, they help, uh, if they have to give up the babies, how they do it safely. They know the laws for the state of Florida and they are, um, against this. They see the founder of the baby boxes as a big money grab and not actually doing the best thing to help the babies. Also, a big group against this is the Adoptee Rights Law Center. And you think, why would an adoptee, a bunch of attorneys be against this for adoptees? Well, this started in Indiana and they're spreading all over the place. That's where the founder is. But they've realized that she has been effective in even changing their law. So the babies don't even have to go through DCF. They have, they don't even get checked out. It's just put them in the box, go to an adoption agency. And they see this as, um, an opportunity for corruption. And it's not in the best interest of the baby. They're not taking the best care of the baby. That being said, pointing out before we move on, other things for our statute. Florida law is very clear that the infant, which they are changing the wording from newborn infant to infant because of the 30 days, must be left with a firefighter, an emergency medical technician, or a paramedic. Every fire station with the safe haven law has a sign that says must be left with a staff member because that is Florida law. The safe haven baby box people tried to get Florida to change the law. It died in the Senate, wa-, the Senate. Why? Because they saw it for what it was. This is a vendor bill. One vendor is trying to get this into law for, for the money. It's just benefiting one group and not so much the, the mothers and children that they say that they're trying to help. Um, something else that's very important for our county in this law, a few times, this subsection does not limit liability for negligence. So it spells out how wonderful Florida law is, but does not let us off the hook for negligent. We see in our overview, I asked chief about this and I guess these concerns all came from the county about the statutory non-appropriate language, identification, insurance requirements. The county has to warrant the device. We have to say it complies with state law and it doesn't. And I do want to point out, the old contract, when it first became before us, said that our county attorneys reviewed this and agrees that it goes with state law. They changed that. Our attorneys changed that. And, uh, we can ask the attorney later, why? Because they know it goes against state law would be the answer. So there's a lot of things that it, it doesn't work with in our county. I saw that I was given an update and it looks like, um, the annual fee has just been bumped up to, which we have no agreement of, of who's paying that in the future. The next bit of information I want to point out to you that what is very interesting is I got an email and it stemmed from the letter that I sent to staff in March was recently published in the Citrus County Chronicle. The next day, I received an email from a bioethicist at Yale University. And she is doctor, Dr. Lori Bruce. And she sent me an email. We ended up, she sent me a lot of information and talking on the phone and said that she read that and was happy about the arguments because, um, in her work and making ethical policy, they have been looking at these baby boxes and, and seeing how unethical they are. She is also a scholar in baby abandonment and baby boxes. So we have a doctor of philosophy, a professor at Yale University, and a scholar of baby abandonment against these. Um, she has given evidence that there's no evidence that the decrease, that the baby boxes decrease unsafe abandonment, even in countries which have had them for a long time. So the fear factor is if you don't have this for someone to put their baby in, they're going to murder the child or put in a dumpster. And just oddly enough, as I said during the last meeting, murderers are murderers. People that want to keep their baby safe are going to find a safe way to abandon the baby. And her research actually proves that. So yes, there are still tragedies, but the, the boxes have nothing to do with that. Uh, they find if there's not one there, the mothers find still a safe way to abandon the baby. Confidential birth, which Florida law ha- has done is, is the best way for baby emban- abandonment to take care of the health of the mother. Uh, there was a recent study by, I don't know if I'm saying right, Sisson, I think, a scholar of adoption. When parents consider relinquishment, 80% cite financial concerns as their primary reason. Parents stated that even a few thousand dollars could have helped them envision parenting as a possibility. Even a small amount of financial support could make a difference between raising their child and relinquishment. In fact, many said, "If I had enough to buy a car seat, that would have made the difference." These findings highlight the differences between how at-risk parents are perceived by baby box policies compared to how they are perceived by adoption scholars. The U.S. may wish to consider expansion of programs to promote family preservation as an alternate to all forms of relinquishment. Um, then there's a lot of statistics that I will spare you and I can offer this up. And she actually, Dr. um, Bruce has been willing to, to come even give a presentation on this, which is, I, I think, pretty impressive, giving her statute. And I did obviously verify who she was and looked her up before we made contact. Her summary is, in sum, "The rates of baby box utilization are extremely low, while other current methods of safe surrender seem robust." Combined with the aforementioned research from other country, baby boxes are minimally effective at achieving their policy goal. In relation to Indiana running with this, spending over $3 million, her statement was, "Baby box funds could have financed accessible birth control or childcare so the parents could keep their babies." Um, interestingly enough too, in Maryland, the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists also raised concerns about these boxes and to their safety. They said, "No research or clinical evidence of the safety or appropriateness related to the device that is described in the legislation." And they stopped it from moving along in Maryland, as Nebraska also has just done. There's, I mean, pages of her research. I have the letter from, they call it ACOG, the American College of uh, obstetricians and gynecologists. And then, of course, the summary of my concerns besides the other professionals, um, being out against it. So this contract says no cameras. You cannot have a camera any part of the building. They want it to be completely anonymous. Um, Ocala has some cameras not actually on the box, but where it's not anonymous, where someone could still see. That helps with victims of domestic violence, human trafficking, and incest. I have a great concern uh, for off-camera delivery of these babies and how it affects that population. I could probably speak another hour on that, but I don't know if me diving into that's going to help. I would hope that those listening would just understand my years of experience, um, that I have with that population. I have mentioned the climate control, that they are supposed, we are supposed to guarantee that it's going to be between 72 and 81 degrees. So you have a metal box on the side of a building in the Florida sun. On the inside of the building, where one would say the HVAC would control it, there's seven tiny holes at the top of that piece of plastic and seven tiny holes at the bottom. I first worried and asked chief and he felt okay for some time, uh, I won't speak for him, um, about the air. I worried about the baby having enough oxygen if left in there for too long. But another concern is, I just don't think that we're going to keep that box at 81 degrees in the middle of the summer. I think that it's going to get very, very hot in there. I'm not willing to stake a baby's life on it. The, the bold print that, um, I won't read it all for you, but that we have to agree to a, a contract and this group basically will not represent its fitness for use, quality, or perfor- performance. We have, they put bold print, that we understand that, but we are still going to call it a safety device. So, board, it's my hope that given the changes in the Florida law, I do not see any need for this whatsoever. I hope that us as a community, if we care anything about the health of a mother and the health of this baby, that we would do better than allow them to be left in a box. We could anonymously, they could be delivered at the hospital. Anonymously be delivered to a staff member at a fire station. Anonymously be delivered anywhere, anywhere with a 911 call. Anywhere that suits that parent. There is no need to have a baby left alone for any amount of time. The risk to the county is great. What happens when a baby that's already dead is put in that box? Or what if something happens inside of that box before anyone could get to it? What about all of, all of the language in the contract, which I have pointed out, the attorneys obviously had put some actually on the agenda memo? We can do better than this. And if we need to do better, I'm willing. If we need to educate the public, um, or help a nonprofit educate the public about Florida law, we can do that. But as a community, we can do much better than, than what we have here. And I hope that this board will agree.
Anyone else like to speak on the board? Commissioner Kennard?
Well, just before we vote on it, I would like to, uh, compliment our colleague on the research that she's done. And, um, certainly appreciate, uh, I fully intend to support it, but I appreciate, um, uh, your background, the amount of time you put into it. And, um, the amount of years that you, uh, that you have as background in this information. So, thank you.
Um, I too, I'm impressed with how much research you did and you do have some, um, concerns that resonated with me. However, one key line you said actually sort of makes the case for approving it, minimally effective at achieving their policy goal. sort of makes the case for approving it, minimally effective at achieving their policy goal. This is a last resort kind of thing. We have so many better ways to hand off a baby, so many better ways. But psychology would say that there are mothers in desperate straits, really desperate straits. They're not in their right mind and they don't want to physically go face to face with another human being, mask or not. And this is a save, you know, saving of last resort, so to speak. And so I'm really actually happy to hear that it's minimally effective. It means all the other things are affecting. But I don't think that the child that is not put into a safe care is minimal. So we need to provide every aspect that we can, so I am going to support it. Last call for comments. Commissioner Finnegan?
Thank you, missed the point of minimally effective, that it can be, a baby can be okay in that situation. But a human handoff is always effective, is greatly effective. And obviously, I see the way this is going and I have to tell you and I understand it doesn't always go our way. I'm sick about this. I'm washing my hands in front of the community of this for a mother that has not had good medical care, that has ended up bleeding out, or a baby that something happens. I am sickened by this and I apologize to the women and children out there. I am truly sorry because I truly believe this is more about promises that you made to somebody in the community instead of about the welfare of people that it may affect. And I hope still that because we have such a strong Florida law, that this is the way that a mother in need would choose. And I am sorry that we are not strong enough as a community to be willing to get in front of you completely anonymous and ask you, are you okay? Do you need help? But I'm still here publicly, willing to help those people.
Anything further? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes four one. E six, A through E.
Chair.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
E four. We're missing about.
Why are we missing E four?
Cannard had slipped out.
Oh, went for coffee, I believe. Commissioner Cannard, how would you?
Aye.
All right, now it's unanimous.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve E six, A, B, C, D, E.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schleba, second by Commissioner Cannard. Is there any public comment on E six? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E seven?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schleba, second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any public comment on E seven? Seeing none, is there any board discussion?
I'm going to support it so that we can get some of our money back from this organization.
How did I know you were going to speak on this, Commissioner?
Every time.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E eight, A, B, and C.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Baze, second by Commissioner Schleba. Is there any public comment on E eight? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. E nine?
Motion to approve E nine?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Baze, second by Commissioner Cannard. Is there any public comment on E nine? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. E ten?
Motion to approve E ten?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cannard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on E ten? Seeing none, is there any board discussion?
Yes, just one moment.
Yes, ma'am.
This is just, this is a discussion in direction of proposed solid waste management fees and assessment rates for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
This would require us changing our MSBU though, correct? If we change the, counsel?
I'm listening.
I'm sorry, I'm listening, I was waiting for the end of the question.
This is the one we discussed that would require us, if we actually proceed with this, we would have to change our MSBU language?
Yes, we would. And talking with Marcelo before the meeting, we did have a lot of discussion yesterday about these, it's actually three items. And at this point in time, you are setting hearings for your next, I'm not sure if it's the next one, but.
July 23rd?
The July 23rd meeting. So between now and July 23rd, we're going to do a deep dive into this and see how we need to change things. If Marcelo doesn't think I said that right, he can, I'm getting the thumbs up. So we identified issues yesterday and we're going to continue to work on those until the next hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Four one. E eleven?
Motion to approve E eleven, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cannard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on E eleven?
As Ms. Barrick is coming up, this again is going to be, just to set the public hearing, we're going to have some better information for you.
So we're not setting the rates now?
Correct, we are not setting the rates now, we are just setting the hearing now.
But the previous one was to set the rates.
The previous one was to give direction to staff on whether or not you felt that the change was necessary or not necessary.
Yeah, and I did not.
You did not?
Carry on.
Janet Barrick, Sutter Springs. E eleven is an example of what I was saying earlier. You're going to set the time for 1:45. E twelve is 1:46. I really would like you to be a little bit more realistic when you set times for these hearings. Because I know, and you know, it's going to take more than one minute. Other than that, I think it's a good idea to set a hearing.
Anyone else? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four one. All right, E twelve?
Motion to approve E twelve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cannard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Would anyone like to speak on E twelve? Seeing none, any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay, I just have to keep going with that because I don't want to get caught in a trap.
Motion carries four one. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, and if by the time we get to the next public hearing, if there is some irregularity or some reason why you shouldn't have that public hearing, then we will certainly, staff will bring that to you at that time of that public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Okay, E thirteen?
Motion to approve E thirteen?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cannard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on E thirteen? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E fourteen? Mr. Howard?
Having a hearing, come forward, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Erin Doran, Management and Budget Director. This item is for constitutional officer budget guidance. The following constitutional officers submitted their budgets for fiscal year 25 or their budget request. There is the property appraisers office, the supervisor of elections office, the clerk's office, and the sheriff's office. On the item, you'll see the requests, the approved budget for '24, the request for '25, the increase or decrease in what that comes out to as a percentage of their budget. So we are just looking for guidance as to how you would like to fund these and have them shown in the July proposed budget.
I saw you on the TV in the back while I was getting more coffee, just so you know. Board?
I seem to be having.
Technical difficulties?
I am too.
Let me see if I can bring mine up.
You would think we'd be beyond this at this point.
You would think. I'm going to try my laptop, sometimes the tablet doesn't work.
Well, I can start out by saying, since I see Supervisor Baird
Thank you.
in the audience, hello, ma'am. She's looking at, good, how are you? I don't know what you're looking at, your budget or my face? Thank you, you have the most comprehensive budget. You show everything. You left not one question, and I just wanted to publicly praise you for that. Excellent job, excellent.
Are you done? Did you receive this?
Yep, I've got it here, thank you.
I just love this when the portal goes down.
Take this opportunity to go to the restroom.
If you want, I can go down the list of the constitutional budgets, if you want to hear it that way.
The sheriff's here, is he here to answer questions?
Why don't you go down the easy ones and then we'll.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's the property appraisers office. His current year budget that we fund is $3,901,214. His request for fiscal year '25 is $4,093, or $4,094,093,195, which is an increase of $191,981, or 4.92%. The supervisor of elections office. There's a split up between operations and elections. So overall, their fiscal year '24 budget totaled $2,714,180. Their fiscal year '25 request totals $2,492,550, or a decrease of $221,630, which is a decrease of 8.17%. The clerk's office is also broken down to clerk to the board and clerk to the court. Their fiscal year '24 budget totaled $3,712,633. Their fiscal year '25 request totals $3,782,95, which is a total increase of $69,462, which is 1.87% increase. The sheriff's office fiscal year '24 budget totaled $39,843,896. Their fiscal year '25 request totals $71,294,918. The total increase is $31,451,022, or an increase of 78.94%.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Erin while she's up there?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and chime in here. I don't necessarily see an issue with the property appraisers office, supervisor elections, or the clerks. The sheriff's office at 79% increase is a bit of a head scratcher. I don't see, I don't see any way that we get there. I do think that, or at least I should say, I believe that I've heard from this board that we fully appreciate the need for some additional officers. I would be willing to support a budget that's based on last year's budget and increasing that number to support the additional, addition of 10 sworn positions. Naturally, I don't know what that would entail at this point in terms of general funds. Certainly, some of the hard costs of adding additional officers could come from law enforcement impact fees and so forth. So I'd like to see that number brought back to us of what it would cost, what it would cost to add those 10 new sworn positions.
Do you have any guidance on a general increase for their budget, say for operations or their current costs? Or just the 10 new positions?
I would say just 10 positions. I mean, I'm not even sure where to start with it with the, quite honestly, with the 31, 31 million additional, or 31 million increase. So I would base it then on last year's budget plus 10 new, 10 new positions. I think that gives us a starting point anyway.
Anyone else want to chime in?
Erin, could you, the highest percentage that was requested, they stayed within their range, some were very good. Thank you, clerk. Could you do the last year's budget with the highest rate or 5% also? And see what that looks like? Not opposed to the 10 new positions, but I'd like to also see that.
Okay.
39 million something was the budget last year?
Yes.
Plus the 5% and then separate 10 new positions.
Okay.
I mean, that's a start to just try to figure out where we're at and what we can afford.
I'm okay to see both of those ideas. The sheriff's here and I won't ask him to be on the spot, but he asked for us to reach out to him directly and I have four questions that I would like answered, so I emailed him directly. Obviously, we're not making budget decisions right now, but what both commissioners want you to bring back. I'm happy to look at that.
Commissioner Baze?
Sure. You know, this was somewhat perplexing and to get that kind of an increase and I, Erin, can you go over with me for this year's budget? There was an additional two and a half million dollars over and above. And when I looked, and I was trying to find my numbers here, we had the requested budget amounts and then the approved budget amounts, but there was never, we've given, only the last two years, there's been an ask since 2019 over and above what we've approved.
So for last year, there was, in the certified budget, there were funding, there was funding for the operations, the judicial, there was an ask for 22 sworn positions, and then ask for the COPSS grants. And so over budget, while we were doing budget, there were decisions made. And so the budget, we had, I believe it was a certain percentage that was added in. And then towards the end of budget, there was a discussion had about the COPSS grants and the funding that we had budgeted for that, that we would probably not receive the COPSS grant as the information we received from the sheriff's office. And so then some of that funding was then added to their budget in September, right before it was passed. I believe it was a little over two and a half million dollars.
Did you say two and a half?
Yeah, I think that was the amount in September when he came back. in September, um, when he came back and had that discussion with you all.
And I think this is just, some things I think need to be explained and talked about for the public because, um, as elected officials, our primary duty is to ensure that the taxpayers are judicious, judiciously and appropriately and fairly, um, appropriating the funds of, for the county and, um, but there's some new laws that have been put in place over the last couple of years for the sheriffs that allow them to circumvent the process where the opportunity for the public scrutiny is really not there anymore. Not their fault, it's just the way the, the, the laws have been written. But this board is responsible for addressing the budget issues, and then we're kind of handcuffed at the end of it, and the information that you've provided to us, you're telling us if we funded everything that was in this budget, we would be negative twenty-seven million, eight hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and that's maxing out our ten mil cap.
Um, that is based on, that negative twenty-seven is based on current millage. So the guidance from the board for this year was to stay with current millage. So we took the new taxable value, the millage for this year. We said that's approximately what it will generate, because we don't have final numbers till July. And then if you look further down, you'll see, um, we have mandates, state and federal mandates that have to be funded. Um, we also have, you know, some county funding that comes out of that. Uh, we don't have a total number yet, so we just put five percent on that. We also have some costs on there that we know are coming, that we cannot change. Um, that includes across the board, that includes our health insurance, it includes increase in, um, grant match for transit and for meals on wheels, the cost of their food has gone up. Um, and it also includes the increase we know that we're gonna, um, face from systems for some of that. And then, that again, does not include any type of new positions, any CIP, anything else that we as the county would then need. You then have the constitutional officer budget request for fiscal year twenty-five, um, except for judicial services and the tax collector, the tax collector comes in August first, and judicial services, we did not have all their information yet. So we just put five percent on theirs, um, just to give an estimate. So, yes, um, if we put all seventy-one million in with the same millage, we would be twenty-seven million approximately short. Even if we did all ten mils and said, we're gonna levy all ten mils, um, and we're gonna take that extra for the general fund, which is one point zero six nine eight mils, that would only generate another fifteen point eight million dollars, so it wouldn't even make up the difference.
Twelve million short, roughly.
Yes, so, and again, those are with some estimates in there because we don't have final, um, figures. So, um, that was just information we wanted you all to have, we don't have all the final figures. Um, but it would be extremely difficult, and even if we increased the millage to ten mils, we, we don't have that funding. So, um, even if you all wanted to see a budget with seventy-one million in it, we would have to cut whole departments and, um, positions to fit it in there.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I don't see this board increasing the millage at all, at least I hope that's the case. So I don't see any need for us to go through, and Erin, I don't mean this directed at you, but I don't see any need for us to go through all these hypothetical situations. We're not going, we're not gonna come out of this with a budget of seventy-one million dollars for the sheriff's office. That's just not gonna happen. Uh, as I, as I said before, I, I do think that everybody on the board, oh, sorry about that. I will, I just sat here listening, I'm like, we're not raising the millage rate, we're not raising the millage, why are we going through the hypotheticals?
Because I think it's important that the public understand this. I mean, we're gonna be the ones that are going, that are being said that we're defunding. We've never defunded.
Yeah, the public's not saying that, though.
Well, the public's not, but we're being accused of that. But this, what you indicated, and I want this on record, you said that this amount of money would equate to five point one zero seven six millage.
Just his seventy-one?
Right.
Um, I would have to go back and recalculate it, but I remember when we looked at it, it was over five.
And then taking an assessed valued house at four hundred thousand, that's homesteaded, the tax on that, just that portion, would equate to seventeen hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents.
That...
No, that would be just for that seventy-one million.
Yes, that is correct.
And I'm, I mean, I'm not advocating that we're gonna raise the millage or we're anywhere near this, but I do think that it, that it, when something like this is presented to us, we owe it to the public to have the conversation and the dialogue, to put it out there and talk about it, because it's not, it, it's not our money. It's the taxpayers' money. Um, and that's, you know, leaders are supposed to be responsible with taxpayer money and maintain a transparent and accountable budget. And I think that's, when we're asked this, we have to be able to tell this story. And I agree, I, you know, if we can, and I just would like to know if, between the certified budgets and the actuals, there was never a cry, never an ask for anything above to be able to incrementally bring these deputies up, if that's what was needed, that wasn't demonstrated. And so if we're gonna go down this road, it's been two years, and we've, um, had these substantial increases now that we can't afford. And if we've had a forty-one percent increase in the sheriff's budget since twenty nineteen, why have, hasn't the deputies been added along the way? I understand there's been overtime, but it, but we should still have been adding deputies, and I can't match the numbers up. I've looked at the FDLE reports, I've looked at what you've reported, I've looked at videos of what they've reported. None of it matches up on what's added, so that's my only concern. Because once we give this money to the sheriff, whatever we give him, which is exactly like the forty-one percent from nineteen, they can do with it what they want, it doesn't mean they have to add more deputies. And they don't have to account for it after that. And that's the only concern that I have about this. If we say we're gonna fund ten more deputies, because we funded ten last July, I believe, but then we've been told via social media that only six have been added, I don't understand. I just wanna know that if that is our agreement, that's what's being done.
Commissioner Schleber?
I agree, I, I, last time in the report, it was there's two hundred and thirty sworn officers, but then I read that it was two hundred and twenty now, and I, I just don't know what it is, and I, we cannot afford to go in debt twenty-seven million dollars, twenty-seven point eight million dollars. What happens the next budget? We, we have to give that same money, and then wh- what will we be in but, in debt then? I mean, it will just, it, it will bankrupt us. So, I, um, I don't wanna say too much, I just wanna come to a, 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 a good compromise of what we can afford as a county and get, get the positions as much as we can afford, trying to move forward. And how many positions we really are paying for, and how many positions there really are.
Okay, Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, it, um, uh, if memory is serving me correctly, it seems like I've seen the number that it costs, um, about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the first year, per deputy, for hard costs and training and all that type of stuff. So, um, you know, if these ten positions are being filled, uh, each year, and that can be demonstrated that that is happening, then as long as I'm sitting here for the next four years, uh, I would advocate for adding ten new deputies, uh, each year for the next, I would say probably three or four years, to get our force up to where it needs to be. Even if we funded the sheriff's office for forty-six new positions today, I think the sheriff being honest would tell us, he can't fill those positions. The personnel out there just are not there to fill forty-six positions tomorrow. Uh, so I think it's, it's, it's fair, um, to the, to the public who is asking for more sworn officers out there, on our roads, on our waters, um, you know, doing something about the, you know, the quads going crazy up in the northwest part of the county. Uh, the traffic fatalities are so far out of control, uh, in our community. We've got to increase our law enforcement presence, uh, to get a, to get a handle on that. And so if, if the only real numbers, realistic numbers that we have to deal with are last year's budget, and then adding, uh, ten new positions, that's one point nine million dollars, then I say we, we start there. We start with last year's budget and one point nine million dollars. Of course, taking out of that one point nine, whatever we can pay with, uh, with impact fees, law enforcement impact fees, so it wouldn't be the full one point nine. I don't know how much of that can actually be covered, and, um, again, just from memories, I met my memory, I'm thinking, I'm thinking we were somewhere in the neighborhood of a, a million dollars in law enforcement impact fees. Uh, I don't recall exactly what was there.
Yeah, we will check, obviously, it continues to grow as people pay impact fees, so we'll check it.
Okay, so that's, you know, we gotta start somewhere, so let's start with, my suggestion would be, let's, um, eh, you know, let's start with realistic numbers. If we wanna add deputies, we do that, and, you know, quite frankly, if the sheriff's office takes the money and, you know, spends it on other stuff and does not add those sworn, sworn positions, then they don't get that money next year.
Dan?
Yes.
Well, I guess that's kind of to my point, is saying that, I'm not sure of the numbers, we were told that we gave them money for ten, but they're saying they didn't get, there's not ten, there's only six. And then if they received an additional two and a half million, even if their starting salary was ninety-seven thousand, seven thirty-two for a deputy for his salary and benefits, there was, out of that two and a half million, there was enough there to hire a minimum of twenty deputies. So that's my, my angst, is to say, I think we have done things in good faith, but what we're being told is those deputies really haven't been added. And that's my concern, is saying as taxpayers, dollars, I, I mean, so we're gonna hand over another million dollars for ten deputies, and the impact fees, and the operating cost for that, are they gonna get hired? Because what happened to the ten in July?
Great questions, and I think we, you know, we, we put that out there and ask that, um, or require that those numbers be provided. You know, when budget season shows up again next year, uh, we need to know how many sworn deputies there were in twenty-three, or in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. And, um, if that, if those numbers aren't provided, then those funds get pulled back. If those funds are, 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 are being budgeted specifically for adding sworn positions, um, and that does not happen, then we pull those funds back.
Commissioner Schleber?
Because you're using impact fees, we're not obligated to those ten if they're not hired? Is that what you're saying? Because when we give money to the sheriff, we're obligated to that dollar amount for the next budget. Yeah, we...
You can cut any of these budgets you want to, they're gonna fight you on it, but you can cut any of these budgets you want to.
Madam Attorney?
You can cut the requests when you make the final budget. So I think at this point, it's just a request.
Right, I understand that part.
Okay.
But when we obligated thirty-nine million,
Mm-hmm.
we're obligated that thirty-nine million the next year.
No, you're not.
No, that's what Randy Oliver told me. I...
In theory.
In theory, otherwise you're defunding the place.
You're setting a precedent.
Yeah.
But you're not, I don't see what you're obligated to it.
I see what you're saying, okay, okay. I just think it's not a good look to, but...
No, I, I understand, eh, you know, makes it, it certainly makes it challenging when, you know, we get the request for a seventy-nine percent increase. That's just not realistic. Um, so again, I'll go back to, what realistic numbers do we have? We know what the sheriff's office was funded for last year. We know where we would like to go with gradually, um, increasing the size of the, uh, the, the sheriff's office force at a manageable, um, at a manageable, uh, rate or manageable numbers. And, you know, I, I think, you know, the initial request, I think, was for forty s- forty-three or forty-six officers. And so if we add those ten officers a year over a period of four years, um, that's manageable for everybody. And those additions need to be demonstrated, or that additional funding is pulled back.
You're going off the forty-three from the top cops grant request?
I think, I think that's what...
Because this budget is asking for like a hundred and thirty employees.
Yeah.
Okay.
Remember, we're dealing with realistic numbers.
Really, okay, and no five percent, just the last year's budget with ten employees, is what you're saying.
Right now, I mean, that's all we've got to deal with.
And you're looking for a consensus?
Yes, please.
So, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Erin, but it looks like the rough math, if we're doing five percent, then that is essentially when you take out impact fees for some of that cost of ten new deputies, that would help absorb increased cost of doing business for the rest of the agency. Again, rough math.
So, the ten deputies that were added, um, were added in July. So, there was an amendment to their budget, and that funding went over, including the impact fees.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know, in that thirty-nine million, that they necessarily accounted for that capital. Again, it shouldn't have, it should have been done in July, so all that should be in that thirty-nine million is their salary and their own ongoing cost, in, in theory.
Right, but I'm talking about the, um, upping what their budget is by five percent, should in theory, more or less, and obviously you'll get us tighter numbers, more or less.
He just said upping their budget five percent. He said they'll fly flat.
Just ten deputies?
Just ten.
What I'm trying to say is it's roughly the same, based on the rough math that I'm doing, so. But I thought we had all, all of you basically said, look at, or I thought, five percent and ten deputies, one or the other, like, look at both options. That's what I thought I heard on the consensus.
The five percent seems to be a number we're just pulling out of, out of the air. I want these budgets to be as low as we can possibly get them, um, rather than just, this is how much money we have and spreading it around, because ultimately, uh, if we can, if we can give the constitutionals what they need, um, and maybe we can get to a point where we can decrease the millage rate a little bit, I, I'd be fine with that. The community's growing, new houses are growing, commercial's growing, let's give them what they need. Um, not anything less than that, but not anything more than that neither.
Well, I agree with a lot of what you said about, um, the traffic accidents, everything else, we absolutely need new deputies. My concern, of course, is that, once the budget is gone, although I like the path that you've charted, that supporting ten new deputies every year, and if you don't, so, if, if those are not substantiated in a year, then you would pull support on that.
Yeah.
So I like that, but I'm, my job now is to make sure that we have a consensus, so I'm trying to figure out where we are.
Sure, sure, understood.
So, go, what is, what do you?
I have, I have something.
Okay, Commissioner Schleber?
Commissioner Kennard, that five percent came from the highest ask, which was the property appraiser, which was the property appraiser who stayed within, and it was four point nine two. That's where I got the five percent, just so you know where it came from. But I'm okay with doing last year's budget plus a ten.
Ten new deputies.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Bays.
I concur.
Okay, Commissioner Canard.
Yeah, last year's budget plus ten new deputies.
Commissioner Finnegan.
That's fine at this point.
Okay, you have your consensus.
Thank you, and we will break out the amount that'll come from impact fees.
Thank you, thank you very much. We are not making a motion on this. My, my agenda says there's a motion, but no, it's just consensus.
The way I'm reading the agenda memo, it says provide guidance to staff.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, E fifteen.
Motion to approve E fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bays, second by Commissioner Schleba. Is there any public comment on E fifteen? Seeing none, any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. E sixteen.
Motion to approve E sixteen.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schleba, a second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment on E sixteen? Seeing none, is there any board discussion?
Yes, yes.
Oh, dead dip.
Just wanna say, this was a zero match and way to go, staff.
Outstanding. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E seventeen, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bays, second by Commissioner Schleba. Is there any public comment on E seventeen? Seeing none?
Down to your side.
Are you in the wild again, Commissioner Canard? Is there any board discussion? Is there any bu, board discussion? Are you, Commissioner Canard, were you getting something to discuss or are you good?
No, I handed in that stack of papers because my computer still is not working.
I have the, I have the big book here if you need it.
Oh, Lord.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. E eighteen.
Motion to approve E eighteen, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bays, second by Commissioner Schleba. Is there any public comment on E eighteen? Seeing none, any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Howard.
Really, just one thing, I know you already approved this um earlier, the countywide resurfacing and preservation projects. I want to thank Public Works, Purchase and Legal. Um, I got a notification at the end of May that this was targeted for September approval and asked them if they would expedite that, uh, because it's important. We want to see these roads get resurfaced, get things happening. So I want to compliment staff coming together as a team for doing that. That has been updated on our website and we're excited. Once we start seeing that roll out, also thank Marcel and his staff also for making sure that we're looking at the locals. So everybody having an opportunity uh to bid on these projects. So that's really big, big news, and I want to thank Team Citrus for making that happen today.
Coming soon to a road near you, a paving truck.
We want, we want to see that happening soon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Howard, and do you have anything under G?
Nothing.
Okay, and we've already done the H's. Moving on to I, nothing on I. Committee reports, Commissioner Canard.
Yeah, the only thing I've got to report is that uh last, what was that, last Tuesday, I believe it was? Tuesday or Wednesday. Uh, myself and several other uh members of Keep Citrus County Beautiful were out at the uh landfill, out at the recycle uh bins at the landfill, just educating folks on uh, I shouldn't say educating, but having conversation with folks about how to clean up the recycling practices, things that, that can go in the recycling bins, things that cannot go in there. And for the most part, I would say most people were doing it uh as they should to help. But um there were certainly some folks that were surprised that uh some of the things that could not go in there, styrofoams that couldn't go in there, or uh they would show up with all the recyclables in a big trash bag and just tie it up and throwing it in there, which they can't do that. That, um, that can't be opened up in the single stream process. Uh, so they were in, by, by far, the majority of people were very receptive. Uh, there was one observation out there, and it didn't take long to see it, that that is very, very tight quarters out there uh along the recycle bins. And I think that it would be worthwhile to look into, seeing if there's a way to loop that traffic. So you don't have people uh backing up and trying to turn around there. Uh, some traffic going one direction, others going the other direction. But rather, um, uh, a, a so, somewhat of a, a loop that they could come in one direction, drop their stuff and just keep on traveling. Uh, there are some people that, uh, they seem to be in quite a bit of a hurry moving through there. And um the little bit of discussion between some of the would-be recyclers, um, discussion that was in all caps, I would say. Um, but anyway, for the most part, it went very, very well. That was just the one observation that if, if that were, if that were a loop out there, um, then I think it would make it a whole lot more efficient and safe for everybody out there. So, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan?
Nothing.
Commissioner Bays?
Uh, nothing.
Commissioner Schleba?
Yes, I'm looking for my notes. It's come to that. Um, so I had the MPO meeting um last Thursday. Was it Thursday? And uh we had a lot to talk about. Talked about the long range transportation plan, the twenty-fifty preliminary needs, um, forty-one and two-hundred traffic study and the transit development plan. I had also asked the um executive director, Baba Spizito. I had um a couple citizens come to me and say, you know, there is a, an area of our portion of two-hundred that people are walking and there's been some close calls and some, some hits and it's very unsafe conditions. So I said, uh, when we get to that point of widening two-hundred, whatever year that is, are they gonna put in a um multi-use path? And he kind of misunderstood me and he came back and he said, all the money, all the funding is going to US forty-one right now. But I just wanted to let the citizens know that, yes, um, I did bring it up. We are cognizant of what's happening on the R section of two-hundred. And um the, the MPO, uh, long, twenty-fifty long range transportation plan, it's, it's a document that guides and plans, and it's planning for spending for roadways. And it was interesting. It also had bicycle, pedestrian, transit. And it's a, looking at over the next twenty-five years. So um these projects take a long time and um, I mean, shoot, forty-one was on the books for, I'm gonna say twenty years, it's probably more. So um it was, it was a good meeting. I appreciate the education. I appreciate the presentations and um that's what I did last Thursday.
Thank you, and while you have the floor, anything under your agenda?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Canard? Commissioner Finnegan?
No.
Commissioner Bays?
I'll just follow up on what Ruthie was talking about. Um, I get, the plans, I guess, are way far underway um for the bridge at two-hundred and they should be releasing those relatively soon. And um, interesting enough, they're building, when they do that, they're gonna do it for six lanes. For the, it could be expanded to six lanes. And that's how they'll be designing the rest of two-hundred is for capacity of six lanes. So that gives you an indicator of what they're anticipating for the future, so.
Ouch. Thank you, Commissioner Bays.
May I, may I ask?
Yes.
When, when is that supposed, when is that slated?
Um, right now, they're just planning for the bridge at this point. That's the urgency and um they're trying to figure out how, the best alignment for it. Thank you.
And while you have the floor, do you have anything, Madam Attorney?
I have nothing.
Okay, all right, last open to the public. Would anyone like to speak? Going once, going twice, closing open to the public. Uh, advisory board announcements, we have none, I believe. So just do the meetings and we'll be done.
Upcoming meetings, regular meeting, July ninth, two thousand twenty-four at one P M. Regular meeting, July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four at one P M. Regular meeting, August sixth, two thousand twenty-four at one P M. All will be held at the Citrus County Courthouse, room one hundred, one-ten North Popka Avenue, Inverness, Florida.
Thank you, Ms. Stanton, and upcoming workshops? That's you too, yeah?
Upcoming workshops and special meetings. Preliminary budget hearing, Wednesday, July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Library Special District at eight-thirty A M. Fire Protection Special District at eight forty-five A M. And B O C C at nine A M. Citrus County Courthouse, room one hundred, one-ten North Popka Avenue, Inverness, Florida. Tentative budget hearing, Wednesday, September eleventh, two thousand twenty-four at five oh one, Citrus County Courthouse. And the final budget, September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four at five oh one, Citrus County Courthouse.
Thank you. All right, and we are recess till five oh one.
[Crosstalk 0:29:21]
All right. Can someone please? Would you mind wrangling the other two?
The way that I describe it.
Are they?
Commissioners.
Oh, there's one. Where's the other? Call this back, meeting back to order. Where's Commissioner Finn again? Okay, Madam Attorney?
Yes, Commissioners. You are about to have a public hearing on CPA 2024-00005. And at the conclusion of your public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending Citrus County Comprehensive Plan by amending an object... By amending an objective and policies relating to residential dock density in Chapter 13 Manatee Protection Element, providing for severability, providing for inclusion, providing for scriminers errors, providing for modification that may arise from consideration of public hearing, and providing for an effective date. This is a legislative act, so there is no quasi judicial as far as this is concerned. And I believe that the applicant is here for the presentation.
Excellent. Mr. Batso, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Brock Batso, 1531 Southeast 36th Avenue, Ocala, Florida 34471. I know it's late, and having been through PDC already, I know that staff has a thorough and accurate report. So I'm going to jump right to it. But first, tonight I'm here on behalf of 728 Investments LLC, but in truth, that's the Keen family. Kevin and his son Brandon are here with me tonight. They have a beautiful home off Waters Edge Drive, which led them to encounter an issue in their dock permitting that led us here today. And that was kind of a circuitous route, but I think at the end of the day, we have a really, a solution that's a win-win for all concerned, including our beloved manatees. So first off, I appreciate staff's time on this. They have put considerable time in a review of this application, as well as the PDC's unanimous recommendation of approval. Without going into great detail, obviously, we live in a unique area where dredging of Florida's coast has been going on since the 1800s and for a long time was actually congressionally funded. Here, that, according to SWF MUD, really began in the 1960s, and we didn't have regulations concerning dredge and fill activity until the 70s, when the legislature addressed it. So what we have in our watersheds are cut-in boat slips, and that's jumping to the point what we're here to talk about today, which we're all aware of. I'm talking about boat slips that are actually cut into the seawall, waterward, landward up toward the home. Let me back up to our manatee protection element, what it is and what we are trying to do. I know you all know this well, but in the 90s, in February of 97, we adopted our manatee protection element, which is our manatee protection plan, similar to a lot of counties throughout the state of Florida that are on the water. In short and very generally, it's a balancing act between boat access and boater rights and manatee protection. So our plan does a really good job of doing that. I was just talking to Mr. Hockadel, and in fact, we had the first plan, we like to brag about. But ultimately, what we're trying to do is limit, in part, boat-to-manatee interaction. And one way we do this is to limit the number of boat slips per linear feet of frontage, as you well know. One boat slip per 100 feet of frontage. We round up, but at the end of the day, that is the rule that is applied in our permitting process. So to summarize this, and you have a red line in your agenda packet that we first provided, and then some staff recommendations, which we're in agreement with those. We are essentially recognizing these non-conforming boat slips. We are recognizing that those actually pose a threat to our manatees because oftentimes they're shallow, they're oftentimes not accessible at low tide, or propose even more danger at low tide. They certainly don't meet modern permitting requirements, particularly concerning the clearance between the bottom of the boat and the bottom of the water that is now required. And so it is beneficial not only, well, it's beneficial to the manatee and to the concepts that the manatee protection plan attempts to support for an owner of a single-family residential lot, it's restricted to single-family residential lots on the water, to be able to fill and restore a seawall. So fill in one of these cut-in boat slips, restore a seawall so that it's now a straight, continuous seawall, and then receive a credit for, a one-for-one credit, to relocate that boat slip onto a dock, meeting modern permitting requirements, other than perhaps the one-for-one exchange of the non-conforming boat slip. So these cannot be transferred, and that was one of staff's concerns prior to some language that they proposed, which we agree with. They were concerned about being able to transfer credits. That's certainly not our intention. And we agree with that language. Staff also raised a concern about continuing with the non-conformity. I would respectfully suggest that, you know, nobody's going to get rid of these old cut-in boat slips because they have the slip unless we create a mechanism for them to improve their property and get a credit for that. Frankly, as we sit here today, Mr. Keen may be the only person in Citrus County willing to spend the money to fill in a cut-in boat slip and then relocate the slip. And we shall see how often this is utilized, but we've talked about the quality of development that we want, and it's coming to Citrus County. And I think this only enhances the quality of our waterfront lots. I want to note, this morning, I received an email from staff, thankfully, making me aware of an email from U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So backing up, when I got hired on this, this was March of last year, I knew one thing, and while I know a few things about land use, I know nothing about what could come, or I knew nothing about what could come if I tried to tinker with our manatee protection plan. And I didn't want to cause the county, I didn't want to be the attorney who stood before you and then led us to a situation where the entire plan gets opened up for review by all of the state and federal agencies. So we first hired an attorney who's an environmental attorney, who I work with from time to time, who's an expert and works with DEP, FWC, Army Corps, all the time. He did some due diligence for us with DEP and Army Corps, running the language and the idea by staff who he works with. Of course, no promises early on until they see it upon transmittal, hopefully after this hearing. But everybody gave us their feedback. We incorporated it. We did a pre-app with staff, including Ms. Lynn, Mr. Howard, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Landon, Ms. Kotu. And actually, they gave us some red lines and some feedback that we incorporated. But maybe the most I learned was through FWC. And we met with FWC's management, or manatee management program coordinator and manatee protection plan coordinator. So if you vote to transmit this tonight, when it's transmitted to Florida Commerce and gets transmitted then to DEP, it will ultimately be sent to these two for review by FWC, who's the main agency that will review this. It is my understanding based on, they taught me a lot, and I'm very thankful that they took the time, especially when we were just pre-application, to spend with me. My understanding based on that conversation was that in their review, they would link in U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So I, as we sit here today, as soon as I got that email today, I responded to Mr. Hockadel, thanking him. I immediately emailed the individual at U.S. Fish and Wildlife, shared with him our application packet, the agenda packet for tonight, and told him, we want to be communicative, we want to invite any questions or concerns or thoughts or comments they may have, and we are available. So tonight, I am not asking you for a continuance. I am asking you to approve transmittal. But I am telling you, and Mr. Keen's in the back, and we can put this in the record, that we won't come back to you for final approval until we have input from U.S. Fish and Wildlife. Our state agencies, FWC included, are bound by that 30-day turnaround by state law. U.S. Fish and Wildlife is not. I hope that they will quickly turn it around, since they reached out to staff for a meeting and seem to be interested. So hopefully, that doesn't come into play. I just want you all to know, I'm not trying to rush anything through, but at this point, I guess I am more comfortable if we go ahead and transmit, and then you have... I guess I am, I am more comfortable if we go ahead and transmit, and then you have my word, that I won't be back in front of you until we have meaningful feedback from, from the feds. So, I am here to answer any questions or concerns. I really just glossed over the text of the amendment, but I think that what I told you was a fair summary. Again, the actual language is in your packet, and I'm certainly here and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Schlebel.
I have a question. Can you give me, and thank you, Mr. Batzel, for coming today, tonight, can you give me the depth of that boat ramp that you have on the left picture? What's the depth of that?
So these are staff pictures, these are examples of cut-in boat slips.
Yes.
I have no idea, I'd be stretching if I...
I'll wait to ask staff then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hockadel?
Am I on? Okay. Still getting used to the system.
Is it red, right up here?
It is, yes.
Then you're on.
All right. Good afternoon. Joe Hockadel, Principal Planner with Land Development. This application's being requested to modify very specific portions of the manatee protection element, Chapter 13 of the Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Batzel gave a pretty good rundown of what this application is. This is my presentation here. I put some examples of these cut-in boat slips, the specific type of slip that's being talked about in these policies. And I apologize, Commissioner Schlebel, I don't have the dimensions of these slips. I just found some examples of what they look like, so everybody knew what we were talking about.
Mike, please. Microphone.
Hey, go on.
Okay. And so, with the applicant's proposed language, basically what they're requesting is to allow for the removal of one of these cut-in boat slips, restore the shoreline, fill them in, and then have the ability to relocate that slip to an existing dock. And so, staff's language, you can see in the blue there, there were some clarifications we requested as part of this, and as Mr. Batzel stated, they are okay with these proposals. So, you know, one of them is just to clarify that it is for the same lot as the slip that's being removed, so that wouldn't allow for any kind of credit to be sold or moved to another property. We did want to make sure that it was something that was recognized prior to 1990, so in other words, it's something that was legally constructed or at least recognized prior to Land Development Code, prior to our manatee protection plan. And that by utilizing this, it could not modify the existing dock in an essence that would violate the requirements for our docks. So, in other words, there's a limit for how far the dock can exceed into the waterway, it can't be any more than 25% the width of the canal or the waterway. This wouldn't allow them to go any further than what they could do there. It also has to meet side property standards, so it's not like they could relocate the slip to a dock and then have it extend over the property line in front of their neighbor's property, so they still have to meet our docking requirements as part of this. So, it does allow for the continuation of a non-conformity, which, in non-conformity, they're supposed to go away after time, but at least it gives some sort of incentive to remove these cut-in boat slips, which were a big reason for a lot of our waterfront variances back in the day, so. I did have a conversation yesterday with Florida Fish and Wildlife and USFWS, and so that, I had that email forwarded over from them as soon as I got it, pretty much this morning, and that's what Mr. Batzel is referring to, so they indicated they would like to have some conversations about this before any hard decision is made. So, if you vote to transmit this tonight, we've got 10 days to get it to the state, and then we also send it to the reviewing state agencies, and then they have 30 days to give us comment. And so, once we get comment, we have 180 days per statute to get in front of you for a second meeting, so.
Anyone?
I do. So, this is a change in comp plan for one boat slip, and then for the, we're changing this comp plan for this application.
This is for the entire coastal community of Citrus County, so it is on behalf of one property owner that they are submitting this, but this policy would affect every coastal property in Citrus County.
So, if this non-conforming boat ramp is 50 feet, you're saying, this language is saying they can only do a boat ramp that's 50 feet?
There's no dimensions as part of this, and it's a cut-in boat slip, not a ramp?
It's a slip.
Right.
So if the slip is 50 feet, and they can, may only, only be exceeded in the event of relocation of a non-conforming residential boat slip on the same parcel, is this, this is just on section, the new language on Objective 20.3, where does it say, if you, if you close this boat, non-conforming boat slip up, this is how much, because there's already one boat ramp there, and we've run into this, where boat ramps have gone too far, and the citizens come and say, "You let this go out of, out of hand, and now it's causing trouble getting down the canal." I don't want to get in that same situation.
Sure. And so that first bullet point that you see says that a single-family residential property that has at least one of these residential boat slips that exists, they're basically getting the ability to relocate that slip if they fill it in, which it says, as long as the owner demolishes and removes the non-conforming residential boat slip and restores the seawall or shoreline, and then they can, once we've got evidence of that, then they can permit the addition of a new slip onto that dock. So it's, it's not dimension-wise, it's just you take one slip, you get one slip. And then there was another thing that was on there that says, it's the second bullet at the bottom that says, "The number of non-conforming residential boat slips removed may not result in an extension or design that exceeds the length or setback standards." So that's where it says that if you do want to relocate one, that relocation, that permit for the, for your dock modification cannot exceed any further into the waterway than what is already allowed. So, it doesn't give them any ability to extend any further than what they would be anyways.
Anyways.
Like with a new conforming dock.
May I help?
Yes, please.
So Commissioner, just, if you can visualize, you have a boat dock, or, excuse me, you have a dock, not necessarily allowing for slips. A dock has certain standards, which is the width, and it's, the area right behind this is where you ran into the issue where the dock was built, and it's 25%, it can only go into the water no more than 25%, right?
Of the width of the canal.
Of the width of the canal. So, the dock is one issue, and then the slip is another issue. So right now, they're allowed one boat slip per 100 feet of shoreline.
Is it, but there's a slip on the dock right now.
No, he's not been allowed to add that slip to the dock because he already has a slip, and he only has 100 feet, or I guess less than 200 feet. So he can't get two slips per his property. So he was denied the ability to have an additional slip. So now he wants to close the slip that exists, so he can put the slip on the dock, but now he's gonna get two slips on the dock, rather than the one that he would be allowed on the 100 per, one per 100. If I said anything wrong, I'm sure Mr. Batzel's gonna correct me.
And this is why this comp plan amendment is because everybody else gets one slip?
Per 100.
And he wants two slips per 100?
Because he's gonna have the one he's allowed.
Because he's gonna get rid of the other one.
Plus he's getting rid of the non-conforming, so that gives, so not just this particular parcel owner, you're making law for the entire county, so, excuse me, entire coastal county. So anyone who has less than 200 feet, because they get one per 100, if they have one of these slips, they can close the slip and have two.
Okay, I don't have any questions for now, because I don't own a boat and I don't live on the water, so I would like to hear from my commissioners that do, our commissioners that do, so.
But did I say it right?
Okay. Is Mr. Batzel going first?
He's already gone.
It's not his opportunity.
It's not his opportunity.
Yes, I understand this.
But he's saying he didn't disagree with what I said.
Okay, yes. I understand this perfectly, because I do live on the water. There's not that many properties with cut-in boat slips. That is something old and rare, and I, they will not let us do that anymore. So I understand that you have a dock with a slip that you've already had, and then you have an old-fashioned cut-in one, so what the, the law would do, or the, I don't know, do you make an ordinance?
It's a law.
That we would change our comp plan, would say that old-timey one that we're not allowed to do anymore, if you fill that in, which, this is probably a rarity, it's expensive to do that, if you take care of that old one and you don't have it anymore, yes, we'll let you get another one. So he already has one, so he's just trading the cut-in one, fill that in, no more, and then just push it to the front. I mean, I get it, we have a manatee protection plan, and that's why, but most people that live on the water understand that if you're a boater, you can't be in two boats at once, it doesn't affect the manatees, and people have like a fishing boat for maybe deep-sea fishing, and then they'll have another boat, maybe for inshore fishing, or maybe a pontoon boat to take the family in, or, you know, a jet ski, or a little motorboat, or something for the kids, so, I mean, I would probably disagree with some of that, I mean, obviously, that's a law that we're not tackling now, but a homeowner isn't in multiple boats, usually at one time. So I don't have any problem with this at all. If he wants to fill in the old one and use that slip in a different location, it's just geography.
Is that a motion?
I don't know if I'm allowed to do that yet.
That's not a public hearing, right?
I have to do the public hearing portion? Do we do a motion before or after that? My brain is...
You have to do the public hearing first.
That's what I thought.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I appreciate that exclamation, I did, I do understand the boat situation, I just don't have a boat and I don't live on the water, so I really wanted to hear, and I kinda wanted to hear from the commissioner, so, the other commissioner, too. And you, you're a boater, so.
She explained it well, you're just, you're moving one, one slip to a different location on the property, closing in this, this old cut-in slip and allowing that, that slip on the, on the dock.
And I appreciate that. My heartburn is the change in the comp plan. That's what my heartburn is.
Understood. But if it makes, if it makes sense, you know, it, you're, you're not adding any additional boats, you're not adding any additional slips, you're moving one slip, you're allowing them to close off one slip and moving that slip to their dock.
Thank you. I think it's actually healthier for the water, personally. I mean, it's not being trapped in that little cut-in, and you don't get the stagnation. I think it makes a lot more sense to get rid of them. There's just not a lot of people that want to go to that expense, so.
I agree.
Thank you, and that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. That makes such sense to me, that they're kinda obsolete and they get stagnant.
Yeah, they get very stagnant. Trash backs up into the air and sticks and all kinds of stuff, so.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna open it up to the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak for or against this?
Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs. I understand exactly what they're talking about when they voted out, and I think it's a very good idea. Also, there are not that many of these cut-ins that are there, and you can't put a new cut-in. So, if you limit it to, it can't go more than 25% into the waterway, that's excellent. I would rather prefer 20%, but 25% is okay, because the boats have gotten larger, and it's just like a car. You bought a house that had a one-car garage, then two of you started to work, now you got two cars. Boats are the same way, you buy one to start out, and then you get a second one, but it's so much easier to put it where they're gonna do it, instead of trying to get into someplace that you're not gonna get in and out of very conveniently, because it does, it gets green water in there, and it gets all kinds of junk in there. You don't even let the kids go into the water that way, because it's not, it's not healthy. But I do like the fact that it's gonna do the whole comp plan all at one shot, and I think you should approve it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, I am Dr. Beth Brady from Save the Manatee Club. I just had a few questions. The one thing I wanted to address is some of the text regarding the language of how this is detrimental to manatees. To my knowledge, there is no issue with cut-in boat slips harming or injuring a manatee, there's no information supporting that. But I do have one question regarding the text, and I just wanted some clarification, and hopefully it can give it to me. So the one part of the text says, "Further, the number of boat slips on a parcel or lot of record shall not exceed one more that would otherwise be permitted." And I don't know if I'm interpreting it incorrectly, but to me, that seems you can have more than one, the 100, to the linear feet of shoreline. Does that mean you can have two per 100 feet, linear feet of shoreline? To me, that's open to some ambiguity, it may be misconstrued, and maybe allow more boat docks than would otherwise be permitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, would you like to clarify that?
You are allowing one more than would normally be allowed if they have less than 200 linear feet of shoreline, because they only get, today, they get one per 100, right? So this is allowing them their normal one per 100 that they would otherwise get, plus they get one more for this cut-in, so they could have two per 100, whenever, when all the other ones that don't have the cut-in situation only have one per 100.
Commissioner Schlebel.
Sorry, it's late, I didn't have lunch, I'm just not keeping up. So I buy a house on the, on the, on the river, and I don't have a dock and I don't have a cut-in, but I go get an, I go make an application to get a dock and a slip. With this change, am I allowed to get two slips?
No, only if you previously had a cut-in boat slip that was recognized before 1990.
I just wanted to make sure, because you attorneys can talk me into a circle, and I wanted to make sure.
Madam Attorney, it depends, if, that means if she only had less than 200 feet. If she had more, obviously you can have more. We should clarify, you can have more than one slip, you just have to be over 200 feet or more.
I'm sorry, I assumed in your question you had a 100, less than 200 feet of shoreline. I assumed that in your question.
But right now, if I have 200?
You get two, plus potentially...
Without this change?
Without this change, because you get one per 100, so if you have 201 feet...
Yes, you did say that, I'm sorry.
Then you get two, but if, if in your 201 feet you had a cut-in boat slip, you could have three.
Okay, and what if I have 300 feet, no cut-in boat slip?
You get three, three boat slips.
With the comp plan the way it is right now?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak for or against this?
I'm not seeing anybody jump up and tell me I'm wrong, so I'm hoping I'm right.
Okay, gonna close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve CPA 2024-00005, Batzel, for 1728, invest/revised manatee element.
I'm sorry, it's move transmittal, not approval, it's you're approving to transmit.
Forgive me, I'll correct the language.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further board discussion?
Will I cover it just by saying you want B?
I'm sorry, say that again?
B, yes. If approved, direct the chair and clerk to transmit the application to Department of Economic Opportunity and other state agencies for review and comment. That's what we're voting on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further board discussion? Okay, any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.